All good, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining tonight. It is now six o'clock and as Mayor Pro Temp, I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of March 18th, 2025. We have Mayor Green attending online as well. But just for ease of facilitation, she asked me to do it tonight. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Littleale.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp start.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Best.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
And Councilmember Hill. He's been absent. Oh, Councilmember Hill indicated that he would be absent. Thank you. You're good.
All right, thank you. All right, I now invite everyone to join us in the optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Moonland moves to approve the agenda.
About a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Now it's time for public comments for items not on the agenda. Would anyone in chambers like to make comment? All right, hi Jane, go ahead, you have three minutes.
I'm Jane Harrelson here on behalf of PB Swims. Thirty-seven thousand dollars over debt was collected in January for that half a percent sales tax that goes to the Aquatics Fund to operate and maintain their pool. So, thank you, City Council, for approving that emergency ordinance last fall. It's a big deal. We still need the money, the capital, to renovate. And PB Swims is moving forward with our capital campaign to renovate our existing aquatic center. I sent you all a link to the report of why we believe this is the best path forward as it is fiscally, environmentally, and socially responsible to renovate what we have. We need three IGAs if we want this pool to be a reality in our governmental agreements. One would be between the city of Leadville and the school district stating that the purpose of that tax is to operate and maintain in a portable public aquatic center like the voters intended. We need an agreement between the school district and PB Swims, allowing PB Swims to operate the facility. And we need a termination agreement between the school district and the county because they, at this point, still hold the 2003 agreement. The report is long, it's seven pages. But we tried to make it as concise as possible. If you have any questions, please, please call me, email me. And we request your institutional support. And thank you very much for serving.
Thanks, Jane. Anyone else? Go ahead, Steve, and then we'll go to go to Main Street. Go ahead, Steve.
Well. Um. See, Chris Dash. Littleale. Um. In today's paper, there's an article, a Denver paper, about inferno in Macedonia. And the European Union has repeatedly expressed concerns over pervasive corruption in the country. I think we have pervasive corruption in our country. There was a a YouTube podcast by one of the members of Congress that talked about how this becomes acceptable if it just continues on and on and on. He was quoting some baseball player and then he went into Mr. Trump. Now, on March 4th, there was an article in the Denver paper, Shell Companies, Treasury no longer to enforce the business ownership database. Executive Director of Fact, Polish, and Advocacy Group for Transparency in Government said with one tweet, "The administration has contradicted 15 years of bipartisan work by Congress to end the scourge of anonymous shell companies, which are a favorite tool of our nation's local adversaries and criminals, including fentanyl traffickers, money launderers, and tax cheats." And probably sex traffickers also. Treasury officials, including former Secretary Janet Yellen, said regulatory burden would be small, costing about twenty-five dollars per business, wouldn't offer benefits to law enforcement officials seeking to track down money launderers and other criminals. The U.S. Treasury Department announced it will not enforce a binary era small business law intended to curb money laundering and shell company information. Sunday, President Donald Trump, when his true social media site praised his consumption of enforcement of the role of said database is outrageous and base. This Biden law has been an absolute disaster for small businesses nationwide. The economic menace of BOI reporting will soon be no more. Now, there was a 2022 novel, Tom Clancy novel by Don Bentley. And on page 126, I quote, "Intention of providing material support to those who profited from others' misery." This is what Donald Trump is doing. His intention is to provide material support to those who's profiting from others' misery. I think we've the title.
No, sorry, we have 28 more seconds.
So I think we need to be really proactive in demanding that these shell companies say who's beneficiaries in their companies when they're buying property. They can kind of
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, Aaron.
Hi, Erin and Amy from Littleham Main Street. We just had a couple of quick updates that we thought were exciting and we wanted to share with you all. Regarding the Lytham Bloom, which is the Flower Box Planter Program that we host here in town. We have decided to use a large portion of our grant that we get from Colorado Main Street in order to purchase some brand new self-watering planters. So I know I see it. It's not going to, I mean, it's still not very watered, but they will hold a significant amount of water inside of them. So the water actually comes up from underneath, and so they only need to be filled up like every so often. We're not exactly sure how it's going to be because like our hair is dry and we've got to kind of test it out. So those are arriving sometime this week. There are going to be less of them, but they are larger than the ones that we currently have. So we're pretty excited about that. It's going to make a big visual impact and it's going to make watering a little bit easier. The other thing is that we have been working with some local volunteers, including one who's a master gardener and a couple of people from the CSU Extension. One is a local contact about bringing in the flower beds that are on the east side of Harrison. There are quite a few of them, and there's about three of them that have been really well kept by local businesses, and we want to keep those. Hopefully, those business owners want to continue to maintain those. But the others that have we are hoping to work with that group and bring in some native plants, some perennials that will be seed, some pollinator plants. And then specific plants that will thrive in the shade and in the sun, depending on where it is. So we're having to answer any questions for you guys, and if there's anybody that wants in on those conversations, we're happy to add you to the email thread and welcome you to those conversations. So. Yeah, and be prepared, we'll be getting you all up for planter box sponsorship because that part of the program is still going to be needed. And then just to give you kind of a visual reference, if you think here in front of here, the side of City Hall is one of the gardens we're talking about. Across the street at Nan Zan is one. There's one by Community Banks. So just, you know, the one by Manhattan is really low care core. And the one by the Quincy Building is really low care core. While the other, there's about eight that are really looking a little bit rough. And I think it'll make a really beautiful visual impact and be a much more sustainable way to do the flowers, which is what we're trying to move the program into is just more sustainable with the soil, the water, and just the manpower that it takes. We always appreciate getting three minutes of your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in chambers like to make public comment? Go ahead, Ron. Rod, sorry.
Thank you. I'm Rod Westin to 8th and 6th Street. And I like the location. Remember the reason that I bought the house was the race series. And it starts and it finishes there, and now I read that that might be changed. All year long, we put up with dog poop in my front yard. It's worse in the backyard. I pick up trash all year long. That comes from folks in Leadville. Somebody in neighborhood has loose cat that thinks the floor of my shed is the world's greatest litter basket. And so they dig that out. Whenever the robins build a nest, that cat deposits chick, eviscerated chick, chicks around the yard, some of the ones. The city's been known to dump snow in my parking space out back. And Mayor Lobbie said it was okay. I look forward to the race series. I look forward to the start and the finish of the bike and the Run 100. I think it's great. There's no more trash in my yard than usual. And the race group comes around and helps clean up. If I have something heavy that has to be moved, they move it for me. The race people have been very accommodating. At this point, I'm 77 years old, two strokes, heart monitor, two back fusions, down to one kidney. And this is year, this is the summer, my son's going to run the 100. So I've been really looking forward to it. And I really hope that that race starts and finishes on 6th Street like it did when I bought the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers for public comment? Anybody online? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. Alrighty, next thing is the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Edwards, New Street, eight, consent agenda. Best seconds.
Can I do an all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved.
Two minutes.
There we go. So next, we're moving into our presentations and discussions, and we have the lovely family Ducharme here. And Adam, you just take your time there. I know you got a lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts and a lot of smoked animals.
Hi, Ayla. Hi, Jebby.
Our third party, we just heard Tim's going away. I'm not around, so. I'll wait for the slides. Yeah, as long as there's trucks down there, we're
City's got trucks.
No, I'm grateful, grateful enough to say that Katie used to teach. So she was like, oh, we have some emails.
Thanks, Katie. And thanks for being here, Adam. I know it's a lot to do with North American youngsters, so thank you.
This now is now in your packet as well. The original link slots it up for you.
The 5011?
Yes, you just have to refresh. Scroll down to page 10.
Oh, cool.
No. She'll always say, how do you manage?
Okay.
So tonight, we're going to talk about Leadville as a future dark skies community. For those of you who are not aware, we have, well, for those of you not aware, I'm Adam Ducharme. I'm the Tourism and Economic Development Director for Lake County Government. And I'm very proud to say that in a number of capacities, I get to work not only with Lake County Government, but also at the City of Leadville on anything and everything that we need to do to improve our community and focus on sort of the direction we want to be going. And some of you might remember that last year, I was able to engage with a CMC student to do some preliminary SQM readings or light meter readings throughout Lake County. And as a result of that project, we kind of got put in the pipeline to apply for a Colorado Tourism Office grant to have a mentor who is assigned to us for 70 hours plus some additional work to help us understand what our opportunities are in terms of dark sky certification. And originally, we had thought that we were going to try and do the south of Lake County as a dark sky reserve. But it turns out, we don't have enough square miles or acreage in all of Lake County to constitute a dark sky reserve. So obviously, that just gives you some context as to, you know, we all know how big or how small we are as a community. But in talking with Dark Sky International, they were really excited about the concept of us exploring becoming a dark sky community. And so in talking with Mayor Green and in talking with Sarah Bushman about potential ordinances that City Council might be presented with in the future, we sort of started to look at this with Dark Sky International. And so we have Ben Bennett on board with us, and he's been helping us as our dark sky mentor. And I'll kind of get into the details as we move along here, but that's just a little bit of context as to why I'm presenting to you today. Just to, you know, that we are, this is something we were looking into and exploring. So next slide, please. So yeah, we're going to talk about what is dark sky Colorado and what's the goal, what are dark skies, why do dark skies matter? How Leadville is protecting the night sky currently and, you know, ways that everyone else that's interested can get involved. So, next slide. Dark Sky Colorado is an organization that is part of Dark Sky International. It's our local chapter, and we have some really dedicated folks who are helping us understand being announced Colorado is pretty aggressively pursuing dark sky certification because we do have incredible access to night skies in the West. And there are many people in many places where they do not have this sort of opportunity to capture the genie before it's let out of the bottle, so to speak. And Lake County and Leadville fits into that category luckily. So, and I will offer that going through this process is not the same part. It's, it's very time intensive, it's very arduous, and it does involve, you know, community support and some volunteer work and some commitment. I've been working on this effort for three years now. Since I started my job, I really thought it was going to be my first few months slam dunk. Nope, not even close. Not even close. So that was Adam's first story into public service. So. But yeah, vision, vision, you know, I think at the end of the day, this is all in your pilot, so I won't bore you too much with that stuff. But we'll move along to the mentor program. So as I mentioned, we do have the Colorado Tourism Office and Dark Sky Colorado through a grant, and we're able to get we're able to get attached to Ben Bennett, who's been our mentor. And he lives in Port Collins. He is a physical scientist and a dark sky coordinator with the National Park Service. And really passionate about this stuff and really thorough and detailed oriented. As we speak, he is currently reviewing our, the draft ordinance that Sarah was amazing enough to come up with and sort of checking that with Dark Sky Colorado as well as with the International Dark Sky Association to make sure that going into any sort of application for certification that we're not going to hit any whoopsies or roadblocks or things like you're not big enough to qualify as a reserve. So we're all learning a lot as we go along, and it's, it's a thorough, but really interesting and, you know, quite a wonderful process, especially as you start to understand all the benefits that come from being dark sky certified. So, next slide, please. What are dark skies? So limited light pollution, enhanced star dazing, protection of natural ecosystems, and preservation of cultural heritage. So, I mean, for us, you might notice in different parts of the county that you have an incredible view of the Milky Way, you know, on a clear night or that it might be a little bit more obscure depending on literally what neighborhood you're in and things like that. And, you know, there are certain things that are that work for us. For instance, you know, having safety lights at a airport that is considered an exclusion. And there are, you know, as we talk about planning and as we think about the details, when we think about our infrastructure around our fields, we basically just have to come up with a plan for moving forward when we are to invest in X, Y, or Z property. That we're actually working with them to make sure that we are working towards shielded lighting and the color temperature, the correct color temperature, and having timeline set on things, things like that. So at the end of the day, the impacts both to flora and fauna as well as human beings in terms of access to darker night skies is well researched, I won't bore you with it, but it's incredibly impactful and something that, you know, we as a community, we traditionally have had access to it with ebbs and flows, right, since about 8160. So it is just one of those things that, moving forward, as long as we can come up with a plan and in general, it's like a five, 10-year plan in order to make sure you're sort of in compliance with what things you need to do moving forward, the benefits far outweigh the spread equity. So, next slide, please. So yeah, light pollution, I mean, at the end of the day, I lived in major metropolitan cities for years. So when I did finally move up to Leadville six years ago, that was one of the first things I noticed was just how incredibly lucky we are to have access to the moon and the stars and also just the sense of dark that you can actually experience in Lake County. So, and, you know, it is a problem around the world. And it's one of the reasons why the Colorado Tourism Office kind of leaned in pretty heavily is because places like Utah, places like Nevada, places like Arizona, they've really done a really good job. And not only does it have the economic impacts and economic sort of advantages of being a place that folks would want to actually come to and be able to experience the night sky, but also just the impacts it has on its citizens and residents of these places where they actually value the concept of do we need access light pollution? So. Next slide, please. Oh, that's one of those. So yeah, when we talk about components of light pollution and things that could affect us, right? Glare, so excessive brightness that causes visual distortion, sky glow. I'm sure anyone who's been in a more rural place and been near a city, that sort of like bubble that's created. I was just out in Tucson, Arizona, and we're in the Sahara Desert, and we could just see this massive bubble from Tucson. And then light trespass, so light going where it's not intended to. Intended to, and this can actually have a negative impact. I think sometimes people think of more light means more safety. But there actually is some pretty compelling evidence to show that when you're blasting light on things, you're actually creating areas of really bright light and then areas of shadow. And that criminals are smart enough to figure out to be in the shadow part. So there actually is something to be said there in terms of all of that. And next slide, please. And I want to so 80% of North Americans can no longer see the Milky Way, right? So, I mean, when you talk about not only how lucky we are and how much we want to preserve that for generations, the, there's also this concept of being able to, you know, sort of provide that as an opportunity for folks that are coming to visit. I mean, we have a lot of, we have a ton of folks who actually have become more and more invested in our by U.S. Forest Service Telescope Program. So we're lucky enough, I think we were lucky enough to have somebody on staff at the Forest Service who is really invested in this and been able to develop some programming where up to, I think, last summer, they had one program and there were 65 people, most of whom were visitors that were there to learn about the night sky, learn about Lake County through the interpretation of the Forest Service. So it's, it's just a great benefit. And from me, as the tourism director, I always say that I'm most interested in attracting people to our community who, what we call high values. So that doesn't, that has nothing to do with financial work. That has everything to do with folks who understand and appreciate the fact that we have a delicate ecosystem here. So those are the kinds of people, when we think about, you know, where could we lean into and grow as a tourism destination? I'm, you've probably heard me all talk about regenerative tourism destination stewardship and the people that sort of share our values around protection of natural resources. So, next slide. Yeah, why do night skies matter? We've kind of hit on all these things, ecological integrity, energy conservation, and climate, human health, and public safety, astronomy. You know, I think that anyone and everyone would benefit from having access to night sky. So, next slide, please. And what are we doing to help? So currently, we're focused on advocacy education, dark sky friendly lighting ordinance, and then a dark sky community application. So, next slide. As I mentioned, Dark Sky Colorado, it does a lot of work. Yeah, Representative McCluskey is definitely a big big supporter of this effort. And just in general, I mean, we are, you can tell that this is a priority for Colorado. And we have one of the largest pipelines of, compared to other states, in terms of working on making sure we're preserving what we already have. You know, and in our case, sort of like understanding what changes could be made, should be made to get us to compliance as a community. So, next slide. Education, so, you know, what I'm doing right now. We've hosted events with Friends of Twin Lakes to talk about the access that they have. Like what we, our partnership with the Forest Service and the telescope program there and the night sky viewing programs that we're doing in the summer as well as, you know, we do have a dark sky display and information at the visitor center. Because we're always trying to help folks understand sort of what is the night sky, what is dark sky, you know, what, you know, the Milky Way. We've literally fielded questions of what is the Milky Way, you folks. So. So next, please. And yeah, what is a dark sky community? So how does this affect Leadville? Dark Sky Communities excel in their efforts to promote responsible lighting and dark sky stewardship and set good examples for surrounding communities. They have implemented a night, a night sky friendly lighting ordinance, conducting educational programs about night sky, and have strong citizen support to protect the night. And just, I'll mention it here, you know, I think at some point, there'll be a few other times where this will be brought up. But I actually am talking with Ben Bennett and our mentor, your Dark Sky Colorado, about creating a a citizen, you know, kind of a citizens engagement group. So throughout my three years, I've had a handful of people reach out to me who are interested in understanding how we can get dark sky certified, but the process is daunting. But we are working on that. But then there's the other, the other side of it, which is education and monitoring. So we actually have to, we have to gather a year's worth of very specific data in the city of Leadville. So at some point, we will be putting together kind of a program and we'll inform you all. I'm sure you'll hear too much about it in community copy, et cetera, probably even come back here. But we'll need folks to kind of help us because again, we have this application period. And then if our application is accepted, there's a potential that we sort of get certified, but then we actually have a compliance period. So that's the time that we need to do the work. So. Yeah, so again, dark sky communities, they're actually, you know, that list is shorter because there's a lot of dark sky reserves, as I mentioned. So there's a lot of places like Great Sandy Dudes and things like that where it's like, duh, check. But for Leadville, this is kind of a unique opportunity for us to kind of join the group. I think there's 15 places currently. But the, the number is growing because again, this is becoming kind of a push for a lot of community. Decent of Great Junction is working on it very heavily right now. And they have a really awesome team. Um, and they have a really awesome team invested in there, so. Next. Okay, so how do we get it done, right? Um, a lighting ordinance, um five principles for responsible outdoor lighting at night. Uh, it is useful, it is targeted, it is low level, it is controlled, and it, and the color temperature is what we consider warm. So, warm lighting, you know, kind of, I think you will know, but there aren't really good examples in here, but there's one right out there. That's sort of like anything in the twenty six hundred Kelvin to thirty four hundred Kelvin range, just something that's kind of got an orange hue to it. We call warm, so, um and as I mentioned, you know, there is a draft ordinance. Um, that Sarah and the mayor have been working on and um that will go through. Um, Colorado Dark Sky and the IDA and then come back for um legal review, et cetera, then at some point. We'll go to to council, so, um again, I think more than anything, this, my my job. Uh, at this point is just to provide awareness of sort of this effort and what we're focused on, so. Next slide. What can you do to help? Um, as I mentioned, I think more than anything, um having some awareness around your own lighting. Um, I know that since during this work, I've shared with Sarah that the twinkly lights on my back deck um now are set to a timer. Um, because I, you know, sometimes I have them on at night because they look nice, but the the reality is, you know, if I'm not out there, then why am I? Blasting that light, uh even twinkly lights, you know, at nine o'clock at night if I don't need to, so. Just being a little bit more aware, just kind of having some understanding, um you know, there is kind of like, there there is a. The ordinance will really spell out exactly what we have to control and what we have to like consider in inventory and what we don't, right? We're not, we don't actually have to go to the door and tell every landowner that they have to change every light fixture. Um, but an ordinance would move us in the right direction and would also, it would take inventory and assess every publicly controlled light. You know, so again, streetlights, Harrison Avenue lights, things like that. Exciting. And yeah, for anyone that's interested in um becoming involved, you can always email me, but you can also email Ben. Um, cause again, Ben, in terms of um. Knowledge around the subject, um I would call myself a first grader, um and he's got a master's uh in this, so he's. And anything that he doesn't know, you know, again, he has direct access to the IDA, so um he is sort of. Doing this work on behalf and helping us to support and get us to a place where we actually have a. He's working, he's gonna be working through the narrative for us to get us to a point of application to the IDA. So that's huge for me, because that's been one of the reasons why I haven't pursued the application for three years now, it's, is the the. The narrative process and the whole, you know, getting everything together is is a whole lot of work, but. Bit by bit, we've been, you know, chipping away at it, and I'm just extremely grateful. Um, for the support that I received in the city, because it's such an exciting opportunity for us um to attack. Sort of our our opportunity here from this lens um with becoming a dark sky community, so. Last slide. Thank you, uh so, does anyone have any questions?
I have one, um thanks for the awesome presentation, do you have any idea where we stand right now in terms of qualifying?
Yeah, sure, so I know that in the county, um because Elliot did a number of readings inside Leadville as well as around the county. We, our 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 median score is something like twenty one, which is pretty, pretty darn good. Um, and so we are really not that far off. But again, what we need to do is do a year's worth of really concentrated readings in specific areas in Leadville. And that will give us a better understanding of exactly how far off we are, you know, I would imagine our score maybe more in the thirties. Um, which, um and again, for those of you who aren't dark sky dorks, that's, you know, like the closer to zero you are there.
So um, these readings, are they done up or are they, they're looking at?
They're looking up, yeah, and so they, and they have to be very specific, so, for instance, um we have an SQM meter, it's a handheld meter. And anyone that's interested, take you to bed by like seven thirty, so uh, for anyone that's interested, uh. Like, we basically need to get a year's worth of readings uh in about three or four different locations around Leadville. And you know, there's a few different approaches, there are actually solar powered automatic meters. You could install, for instance, on top of the courthouse, and you, that one could be great, you know, and and it's go, always be the same angle. And it's gonna be, you know, again, solar powered, so it's charging throughout the day, and then at night, it's gonna get a ton of readings. And then there are these handheld meters, the handheld meters are about a hundred and thirty bucks, they come from Canada, there's one person in Canada who makes the meter. And uh, it's pretty awesome, um I have it at my office, I've used it once, um and uh during the winter, so I can go out at like six thirty. But uh, it's, and again, when you're taking these readings, especially with a handheld meter, it's, it's just really important that you're standing. At the same GPS coordinates, give or take three inches, six inches or something.
So your consistency.
Consistency is very important, yep.
Um, just one more question, have you talked to West Cliff or any of the other communities about what they had to do in order to qualify?
Yeah, totally, yeah, and really, at the end of the day, like the, the investment in the sort of more automatic. Cause really, at the end of the biggest lift is that um. The meter reads is is getting a year's worth of data in the specific location that you're, that you need to sort of qualify for. And then um, once that's done. You take a year, two years, let's say, to sort of like work on your compliance and then taking those readings again, so that, that type of effort.
I meant more in terms of, did they have to shut off the street lamps at a certain time in the night or?
Sure. Uh, yeah, and honestly, so far, I haven't heard of, you know, like, basically, it comes down to commercial, you know, commercial. Um, businesses that do not need like after closing hours, that kind of thing, it's like a. Like an hour after a game or thirty minutes after a game includes for um field lighting, things like that. So they're not, they're not um excruciatingly um stringent, but there are things around that. There are things around shielding, sorry, just shielding lighting, and yes, there there are those investments, you know, when it comes to. And again, that's where for me, I always think about, it's about investing for when we're ready to, you know, when, when things reach end of life. To doing it right, you know, and being sort of aware of that. But yeah, again, um so far, I haven't received any, I mean, you know, just to give you an idea, um. Some communities, it can take two years, some communities, it can take a decade, in terms of compliance, like full compliance, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so on my list of things to do after I got here, same as Adam, was to make our community a dark sky community, and it is. I think for the city itself, for for city officials, that heavy lift will be the ordinance. Uh, and then I think the the legwork to get the international dark sky certification is what Adam is saying, and I think. So we, as far as compliance right now, we do have some provisions in our ordinances that are dark sky compliant, we probably need to, you know. Essentially, the ordinance that you have as a draft. Um, is an ordinance that the town of Castle Valley, Utah, used um in working with the International Dark Sky Organization. So they have the assistance with the international organization to write it. I think we've already had a little bit of legal review on the ordinance, but it 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 essentially, that's our heavy lift, and then the compliance can be. I mean, I think also Moab is working on it, it can be over ten years, so if you have hotels that have signs, commercial businesses that have signs, they have ten years to comply. We would have, you know, potentially ten years or, you know, a a certain period of time to make street lighting compliant and that type of thing. I did have a meeting with Excel Energy, one of their regional reps about a year ago. And I talked to them and I said, what, you know, we want to potentially become a dark sky uh community, and they said fabulous, fantastic, we are in full support of that. Uh, our street lighting is dark sky compliant, we're actually really on board with that, because one of our biggest things is our street lighting as far as. Um, and you know, again, downward, it, you know, for residents, it's really making sure your, your porch lights are speckled, we're facing, it's not a bare pole.
Yeah.
Um, and those types of things are.
Yep.
Usually low.
Shield, shielded lighting and and most all power companies are really experiencing load issues, so. Most, most power companies are like, oh my gosh, yes, of course, you know, I think that, you know, and just to paint the picture a little further too, I mean. You know, I I think for me, I would really love this to be an incredible opportunity for us to engage. As we go through this process with our partners in Prefort Mackerel and and Climax as well. Because that, that, you know, they're they're obviously um Fremont Pass has a certain amount of twenty four hour operations, there are safety considerations, but. There's all, that's also not, not reinventing the wheel, we're not coming up with a new idea in terms of having twenty four hour operations, that is also dark sky compliant. So, but again, I think I'm a big fan of like, lead the horse to water and show them how to drink, so I'd be love for us to. You know, be able to provide a really good case study of. This is an insurmountable.
Adam, um, I know that planning and zoning for the county, our new signage ordinance is taking into account dark sky. Are there any other city or county groups like planning and zoning that you're looking for buy-in from that you haven't been able to reach out to yet?
Uh, I've, I've had this conversation, you know, I'll just be fully transparent, I've had this conversation with county, with the county, and you know, the electrical and lighting. Well, first of all, electrical is something that the county doesn't actually, you know, um enforce themselves, um they, they outsource.
Right.
And then also, any sort of ordinance change or any sort of, um, we technically have dark sky compliant lighting code. But what the IDA will tell you is that this technology and this sort of understanding of dark sky. It it does change every six months to a year, so um, and as I'm sure Chapin, like his head would explode if I told you that we had to change the. And change code every six to, six months to a year, so the point is, is I think that, again, we're, we're really trying to like prove. To, you know, kind of use this as a a proof of concept and to be able to go out to a larger, larger conversation about all of Lake County.
There you go.
And again, like I said, those readings are already fairly low in Lake County. Um, you know, again, the things that trip us up, but are are, some of them are exclusionary, are things like field lighting.
Yeah, things like, yeah.
And the um, uh airport, safe lighting, so.
Thank you.
I just asked two questions.
Yeah.
Staff.
Go ahead.
Uh, in in your work, I guess, uh with dark skies so far, is it, I'm assuming it's, it's mostly or all exterior lighting fixtures? Is any of this considering interior lighting fixtures and the impact that that may have, just like the instruction, transparent walls, et cetera?
Yeah, um, no, I haven't asked that question, but happy to add that to my list for Ben.
I I imagine that exterior lighting fixtures is like ninety nine percent of the focus, right?
Yeah.
Um, and the other question I have is, um, just with the examples of other communities that you've, you've looked at with these exterior lighting regulations. Are, is most of that typically falling within the zoning realm of the city codes or some of that extending into like public works? Uh, rights of way codes, et cetera?
It does, it extends to all.
So, so kind of living with both within public works, right of way and and like regulations for private property.
Correct.
I I don't know.
Yep, okay, correct.
I I can answer part of your question, so I, um, with the city attorney in Castle Valley, I got that question about the internal lighting. And my answer was yes, because it all goes towards the bubble of light, so the, the, so if there, you know, happens to be uh somebody who has just, you know. Glass walls and they've got a ton of lighting, you know, and they're, they're shaking to come down, they, they need the control of the lighting that's projected to the outside, so.
So in other words, we, there, as we get into refining ordinances and things like that, it could be a series of ordinances long term. We may not want to limit that to exterior lighting regulations, um potentially, you know, like.
Yeah, I think where you'd run into that too is if you, let's just say tomorrow, we were all. Uh, our ordinance was enforced and we were in full regulation, if our SQM numbers don't actually get us down to an acceptable level. That's when we have to start trying to understand where the issues are, that's where my head goes, you know.
Any other questions? Anybody online, uh Mayor Green, do you have any questions?
No, I've been pretty involved in this exploration uh up to this point. Thank you.
Great. Well, thanks for all the time and effort, Adam, and thanks for presenting tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to department reports, but before we do, uh Laurie, would you like to introduce our new legal counsel?
Uh, first thing on my department report, so we have joining us this evening, Nicholas Hartman. He uh is filling in for Ellie Laboon, uh who may have had her baby today. Uh, so a Nicholas is going to be with us um for a period of time helping us out and uh we'll be in our council meetings until Ellie returns, so. Nicholas just wanted to say welcome and uh, do you wanna say anything?
Um, hi, everyone, I don't have really have anything to say, no Ellie baby updates, so I'm on pins and needles, just like you guys, but. It's nice to be here and I'm excited to work with you guys um for the next couple of months.
And Mr. Hartman's already been working with the city on a number of our legal questions and and things that have come on, so. Uh, his face has moved on to maybe, he's been helping us out for a really bit, so yes. Great.
Thank you. Thanks for doing it, Nick.
Was that? Or sad to.
What's that?
The photo byline is Nick Hartman, isn't it?
Oh, no, that was just because of the, the zoom. Uh, okay, a couple of things, uh I attended the Cast Legislative Conference uh in Denver. Uh, I don't know, about a week ago, and um, one of the things that that happens at that conference that I think is really helpful is they have Brian Lewandowski, who is. Um, he does the economic update for uh the group every year, and some of it I I think is uh a little over my head, there's a lot of uh. Charts and graphs, but I think uh, one of the things that he really focuses on Colorado, how Colorado is doing and mountain towns, and so I just wanted to share a little. Um, some of the things of his presentation that I thought were kind of helpful. Uh, it it's, it's, uh, he said things are shaky right now, consumer confidence is a little bit shaky. Um, given the changes that are happening at the federal level, um people are worried about inflation, inflation and the job market, and his information came. Uh, so this was just about a week ago, and his information didn't include some of the recent um federal layouts and everything, so that. That economic information will be coming in the next month or so, but uh consumer confidence is a little shaky, um the, the. The main thing I think is that we're, we're hearing that interest rates are gonna stay steady for for now, there's not a a. An anticipated increase in interest rates, um, but um elevated uncertainty weighs on economic growth, so his, one of his takeaways is that. He, in conclusion, he predicted um sort of just overall um modest growth, slower consumption, um modest employment um growth. Uh, we are gonna see in, just in general and also in Colorado, a peaking of retirements, which will affect the workforce. Um, because in in overall, we're having, we're seeing, you know, our population is aging, um so slower population, population growth. One of the things that I thought was interesting is that Leadville is bucking the trend a little bit as far as our sales tax and lodging tax. So in the discussion portion of this meeting, um a number of mountain towns were reporting that their sales tax is still lagging behind where it was year over year. Um, one of the folks I wrote down, Steamboat, uh their lodging is uh six point four, four percent down, and their sales tax is three percent down. You'll see when our finance director makes her report, I'm not gonna steal her thunder, we are totally bucking that trend, and it may be. That people are changing where they intend to vacation, which leads me to the other, one of the other interesting points that um. Brian's uh or Mr. Lewandowski's presentation covered is um people's anticipated uh vacations, whether or not they anticipated taking a vacation in the next six months. And so, um overall, the, 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 the numbers they were seeing is that the intent of taking vacation has pulled back. For domestic international, international travel, uh but the, the real question is, that was a. I I I actually asked him to expound upon that, and he said, well, it's, it's an expectation, so this is an. And he said, well, it's, it's an expectation, so this is an economic survey that's sent out and it's sort of, he said, basically intention doesn't always match reality. And so if people are intending to pull back on vacations, he said, it's not always the fact that they do. Um, so what we're sort of hearing in the global level is maybe uncertainty, some shakiness um, concern, whereas we're seeing just a little bit of the opposite in our numbers here. And it may be that people may be scaling back on international vacations, bigger expensive vacations and traveling locally. Cause I, I raised that question about the pandemic, you know, where a lot of domestic travel increased, where international travel declined. And so it, 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 it's a little upside down. And so one of the big takeaways from the, his presentation was just uncertainty. One of the things I wanted to highlight though, he said for the ski counties in Colorado, there are fourteen of them. Um, employment and wages are growing faster than inflation. Um, and we have point seven percent lower unemployment than Colorado in general. Um, so, you know, I don't know if y'all know, but Summit County is, is, is the most, um, uh, is one of the biggest economic drivers in Colorado, so the ski industry and resort counties are economic drivers, the rest of Colorado. Uh, one of the interesting facts that I think came out of it is they look at DIA. So DIA was built for, um, uh, so fifty million, um, travelers, they're up to eighty million now. And, and so some of that, it's the third busiest airport, and he was talking so fast, I, it's the third busiest airport. Uh, but the, the, the issue really is, is that, you know, sometimes I think Colorado bucks the trend on, on some of these numbers. Uh, the, the last thing I wanted to raise, which is kind of, or two last points, one of the big questions was federal employment. Right? So the layoffs of, of federal employees and how that may affect us and may affect Colorado. Uh, the interesting number is that we have plus or minus about fifty-four thousand. So that's how many people could be potentially impacted by, you know, mass layoffs and everything else. Um, so the last point I wanted to make is the Lake County State Sales Tax Comparison. Again, we're bucking the trend, we're five percent up year-to-date from November twenty twenty-four, um, from the November twenty twenty-three. So, um, you know, his update is, is, is always sort of the, we don't know until we actually know, uh, but I think the one thing that we'll just need to keep in mind is there's, there is uncertainty. Um, there's a lot of chaos, um, our sales tax numbers are good so far, but we, we don't know, uh, how that will play out for the rest of the year, and we are taking that into consideration for, you know, our budgeting and the city's fiscal position for the rest of the year. Um, that was a long update, so I'm just gonna update it, um, you on a couple of things. Uh, keep in mind, you have the work session on the lifetime permits next Tuesday. Um, we've had a number of, uh, work session or staff meetings within county to prepare for that, get you the information. So you will be getting a packet of information like you would normally, uh, we're gonna have some information coming out. We'll, we'll obviously also be getting that, uh, out to Lifetime as well. We just did a run today of what the meeting will look like. Um, it will be very similar to many of other work sessions, introduction of why we're here, what we're trying to accomplish, some presentation materials, um, opportunity for public comment and obviously opportunity for the electors to, to talk. And really the outcome we're looking for is what, what changes are we looking at for twenty twenty-five? And we need the city and the county to be, um, in, you know, in consensus on what that looks like. Because really our permits go, um, hand in hand. It is a work session, so no decisions will be made, uh, we will be having meetings scheduled for the permits for Lifetime. Uh, we updated the permit forms, so we've asked Lifetime to submit their permits on the new forms. We don't have any of the, of their permits on the new form. Uh, we have a few of them, I think most of them are old form, but the whole point of updating the forms, which we wanted to make them better for this year. So you will be seeing those and we will be scheduling those for your actual decision-making, um, as soon as we have those and hopefully very soon. Uh, so that we will, I think we decided in, in the, uh, interest of efficiency, we're not gonna have them all in front of you in one meeting, um, we got feedback that was too much. So we'll probably have, break them up, maybe do all the other events in one meeting and then have the hundreds in a separate meeting, if that seems reasonable. But we won't have them all at the same meeting, um. So that is your work session next Tuesday, um, just remember it is at CMC. Uh, it is six PM, it looks like it might go past eight PM based upon our meeting today, it might be closer to nine PM. Our annual legal training, um, I am gonna work on another, another date, it doesn't look like everybody can make it on the twenty-ninth. So I will get back with Sam Light of Sursay and get some dates in May, so we are probably looking at some dates in May. If you have any non-city council meeting Tuesdays, so the other, the second and the fourth Tuesdays, that you are unavailable, can you please let me know, um, what those are and I will eliminate those, um, from consideration. And, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions in the Simmons?
Any updates on internet boost to begin?
Uh, oh, yes, okay, so we have, uh, we're, I'm glad you brought that up. A couple of updates, so we are gonna schedule regular, um, reports, quarterly reports from our, uh, property management company, so we will have, um, information and data about that. So we ordered carpets, um, and then we found out it was backordered and we wouldn't get it in time, so we switched type of carpet so we could get it in quicker. Um, the carpet has been ordered and we have given them a drop dead date to get it and get it installed. Um, I think, um, in now, basically four weeks from now, so.
To end of April, then. Still one tenant, apparently.
Yes, and what we realized is that we, uh, we have what, uh, I, I've been calling it a hierarchy of, you know, first city employees have priority in that county and then people who work in our community. And I, I need to make sure that Centennial Real Estate understands that they can promote this as available to people who are working in our community, and so I've let, um, I.
I've sent a couple of people to Centennial to ask specifically about that and both of them have been able to sign leases, they, I think they're short. But they seem to be aware that
Yep.
as long as they're related somehow, like, well, there, it's available housing.
Yep, and I, I was having a meeting with another one of our agency partners and I mentioned that as well, that if, if they're in need, um, I think it was somebody who was trying to hire and I said.
Does Jackie Rehman still run the little?
Oh, the rental?
Rental list? No, um, that is, is someone taking that over that we could let them know that eight oh nine is an option? Isn't Cipriano running that?
Uh, I don't know that the housing coalition is de facto running it, um, it is, it was Grayson at one point. And I think that was supposed to be handed off, but never was.
It's kind of up to date.
Yeah, no, it's not bad, someone is running it, but I, I can let them know.
And we should let Grayson and Cipriano know that this might be an opportunity, what about, um, the table? You were, we, we were having some, some repair work done there, was that?
Oh, yes, um.
Insurance plan?
Yeah, yes, uh, yep, so the good news on that, thank you for reminding me on that. The, um, good news is the repair work has been completed and when they went in to do that, they did not, um, find any asbestos. Uh, they, it, it would, it either had been remediated in the prior work that we had, had to do, or it wasn't there. So that was the great news for us, is that that didn't result in any additional work other than fixing that, like.
And so they will be able to open in London May as usual?
Yes, and I've been, um, uh, Mr. Medina has been great about keeping Main Street in the loop on that and letting them know where we are. I think there, uh, there was one thing they needed to do on that, um, bathroom before they could use the bathroom. But I believe he's been keeping them very much in loop about that.
Very good, so we should be in good shape by season one at least. Uh, last question would be on the building we own, the, the potential civic center.
Yes.
Any new work or any new scope on that?
Well, so as, uh, the last meeting we updated, uh, Mule and Ms. Barrett has been good about sending out. So the, the DOLA grant we did not receive, they prioritized health safety, you know, they, they were oversubscribed. They encouraged us to apply again. So, um, I don't wanna steal, uh, Mayor for Tom Tharp's thunder, but he's gonna update in council reports about our, um, what we're calling the wrecking crew meeting is all the group that are talking about indoor wreck and what space exists and doesn't exist. So we're trying to strategize who applies for what grants. So there's congress, congressionally directed spending, there's, um, DOLA grants, those are the ones we usually may overlap in, and there's other types of grants. The two entities we didn't get grants from have encouraged us to apply again, but we're also trying to make sure we're strategizing with the other groups. So, uh, I think that we are gonna have to make a decision pretty quickly if we're gonna reapply for those grants. And it's a strategic one because those cycles are also gonna be very well oversubscribed. One of the pieces of feedback we got is you really should work with other entities in town and figure out whatever the need is. We're like, oh, that's a great idea, yeah, we've been doing that for, you know, you, you've been on that committee for months. So that group is actually making some, having some really good conversations, the pool conversation is kind of overlapping on that and sort of taking over the, the conversation on congressionally directed spending, so. Um, uh, it's an understatement to say there are a lot of moving parts and we're trying to make sure the moving parts are working together and not against each other. And so strategically, we will need to decide, if, you know, we could apply for a couple of smaller grants to say, separate the electrical. Right? Still time to the money museum or get the heat fixed in the building without committing to a particular use of the building. So that's also an opportunity, the other idea we, um, which I thought, our DOLA representative thought was a great idea is to pursue funding on the feasibility of doing a, uh, recreation, creating a recreation district and a recreation district tax. So, um, that is an idea that's sort of been floated to, to rise all the boats, right?
That be done in conjunction with bounty pieces?
Well, so a record, y, y, yes, I mean, so a recreation district would, you, you would set the boundaries and of course you would set the boundaries to incorporate the county. And then the, that would be run just like the school district, the housing district, the board. The point being, it has tie of money that's, you know, this tie could go towards county, this tie could go towards community center, this could go towards, who knows, mineral milk grooming. And, and then it would, it, it, as opposed to the county just running its own, um, increase in sales tax. So our DOLA representatives thought that might be a, a good thing to apply for. The problem is, you know, we have great ideas, but a lot of conversations need to happen and the deadlines are coming up quick. So it's a long way of saying we have lots of ideas in the hopper and we're just trying to make sure we're not stepping on anybody's toes.
Yeah, trying to make sure that the asks are well run out.
Inconsistent, so we're not, I, I, I think that we're not getting like, we got three different applications from this community and they're not consistent, and I think that's the great conversation we're having, is trying to make those requests consistent, so people like, I get, this is, this is the path.
Yeah. One question on that note, since you mentioned it, uh, when we consider districting, I know, um, for multiple reasons, we do should consider some, uh, transportation, um,
Yeah.
version of that, I just.
Well, that was one of the things that was thrown out, I mean.
Yeah. Cause that, I know that complicates that plan, cause good luck doing it in one year, but.
So, uh, okay, so Tanya Allen, who is the ED of the, um, Eagle County Transportation Authority, has reached out to us and said, would you like to join? So we would probably join their district instead of creating a new district. Does that make sense?
Yeah, would that be the same process still?
Yeah. Same process, but it would be instead of we create a recreation district box, we would join Eagle County's existing district as like a pullout.
Less work for us, but still.
Still have to go to the voters, still would need to, um, pass the tax. Uh, but I, I a hundred percent, you know, when we talk about dark skies, we talk about wellness things. These are the things that we want to do and we should do. Um, you know, because right now Eagle County, their transportation is free. Right? So that transportation district is free for their, for, for their in district locals. But for, they serve Lendville, right? So the, the, the bus serves Lendville, but our folks have to pay for it. Because we're not in the transportation district, we're not paying any taxes to that district. Um, in perfect world, we would join that district, we would collect the tax and then our bus service would be free for to and from Eagle County for our residents. But yeah, that's a lot of taxes, where we just talked about uncertainty, chaos, you know, and so this is the, the dilemma is, we have, we, we really benefit from these things, but it's an ask, it's an, it's an ask out of people's income, so, yeah, um, you know, and, and those, you know, sales tax is a little bit less of a burden on residents than property tax. Property tax is directly, sales tax is also paid by anybody who spends money here. Uh, but yes, so it is out there for us to eventually join the Eagle County Transportation District.
Any other questions from the Simmons? I have one, um, where are we on the action items that came out of our town hall meeting? Um, on how city departments and law enforcement would interact with federal immigration agencies?
Yeah, um, on the to-do list, so I think it's, yeah, we, I need to follow up with our internal departments and, um, get working on some of the action events, I think. You, you know, once we had that meeting, uh, we had some good, I, I got, you know, notes on some of the, uh, action items that we can work on. Uh, we just need the time to work on.
All right, should we move on to the next one? Street Department?
Oh, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Medina. Hold on a second. He. Oh, okay. All right, so Ms. Medina said, snowfall forecast is calling for six to ten inches of snow tonight, I'm going to try and catch up on sleep from last night. Nothing to add to my report, um, snowplow and cleanup after the last storm, ice removal on the intersection, um, thank you. And so, uh, he, I expect his, that was sent to me about an hour and a half ago, so I suspect he's already asleep. So I'm happy to pass along any questions, but he has nothing to add to his report and packet. Okay, and I did miss this, I'm so sorry, uh, Ms. Cosco asked if she could go first for department reports, I'm so sorry, I'm just seeing this. She is two hours ahead of Eastern Time, and so, um, if at all possible, can we, can we do?
Sure, yeah.
Animal shelter. Ms. Cosco, we still have you or did we lose you because it's late?
Yeah, no, I'm here, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so we've had fifty-one animals in our care from January first to March twelfth. I believe we've only had one animal come in since I've been gone, um, to have been out on family leave. Our February statistics, we had twenty-four intakes and twenty-one outcomes, so almost even, which is great. We had eleven strays, only one of them was unclaimed. We did have eight surrenders come in from the county, um, my understanding it was a hoarding type situation. We ended up getting twelve cats or ten cats in total, um. I do believe some of the cats remained with the owners, but of the ten that we got, eight of them were transferred out as we had kennels in the bathroom and the staff room and the hallway, they were kind of everywhere. So Summit County and Eagle County Animal Shelters took some cats from us. And then two of them were trapped, so those are currently at the shelter and have an adopter who's gonna pick them up on Thursday. They'll get spayed on Wednesday. I do have the graph here, happy to make adjustments in the future if it's more useful for you all to see the numbers on the bars there. Um, but you can see strays are pretty even, surrender so far this year have all been from the county. The other is gonna count for either personal owner requested holds or law enforcement hold. So an owner was in the hospital, there was nobody to take care of the pet, so they brought it to the shelter. We did have our open house on Saturday, so that was fun, um, we had over twenty community members show up. And I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but we did get roughly seventy or eighty dollars of donations, which is nice. In June, we're gonna look at having a slumber potty, um, so that is something other shelters do. And I won't ruin too much of the surprise, but it's kind of like a walkathon in which you raise money, people pay per hour for you to complete certain tasks. And then we have a dog at the shelter. And then we have a dog at the shelter, um we call him Zeb, Zebby, Zebby. So his original owner is actually gonna be driving up from Missouri. I believe they said it's like a fourteen or sixteen hour drive to adopt him on Saturday, so we're excited about that. And then I do have a meeting next week with the mayor and Lori to um finalize the strategic plan objective, and we'll present those to you all soon.
Thanks, any questions for Ms. Cosco?
I was gonna note, and I think this overlaps with the uh police department, so if I'm stealing thunder there, uh the animal control position was posted. Uh we received a number of applicants, the first round of interviews has been completed. Uh we had some good applicants, so the second round of interviews will happen uh this week. Uh I think the second round will be uh me, human resources director and um the mayor. And we're hoping that we can finalize a hire shortly after that. And um in discussion with the animal shelter and police department, we have, uh now that we have a chief in place, we think it would be a good idea to have that animal control position, because we've always said it's not a full-time position, that to be a um animal control slash community service officer, because we we did lose a community service offer officer with the sheriff's office. So instead of filling that full-time, that would be animal control slash community service officer, and that uh position would support to the police department.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Caitlin. All right, uh who's next? Chief Chalka?
Hello, so mayor, good evening. Uh in regard to highlights, we didn't have any highlights on our monthly report, but the highlight I wanted to articulate was the mayor and city administrator at a conference last month. The finance director from Frisco lost her wallet. Yeah, an air tag, yeah. It showed up in Leadville. So we did recover the wallet that residents here in Leadville, it wasn't stolen, somebody from Leadville simply was shuffling snow, they found it. And they brought it home, maybe all the contents were intact, so that was a nice recovery. Uh also in regard to the monthly report, our calls for service here to date, uh at the end of February were six hundred and one. We're actually tracking down from last year. Where that's important is for dispatch calls, they're costing the city about eighty-five dollars per call for dispatch to utilize. Uh the county is running about almost two calls for every single one of ours. At the end of the year, that's good news in regard to budgets, that means the county could potentially pay more than the cities paying for dispatch services. So I'm monitoring those numbers very carefully. Parking enforcement, I know there were some questions that passed council meetings in regard to orange tagging vehicles and parking enforcement. Uh there's gonna be an emphasis on getting traffic moving downtown, uh with our CSOs. Any officers, we want uh our customers to be able to spend about two hours each on our businesses, so we wanna keep uh the parking, the people are parking downtown, we wanna keep them moving. In regard to uh vehicles that are abandoned or unregistered, in high, on high-volume streets, there's a greater emphasis on vehicles that are obviously not operational or aren't registered, and we'll orange tag them. Uh generally, the orange tag allows, I think it gives you twenty-four or seventy-two hours, I can't remember, generally, we're giving them a week, we're showing a lot of grace. Uh but if they don't move it after a week, we'll try to contact a registered owner. Uh we we really try to work with people, if they're unwilling to work with us, we simply tell them. Uh some people I've noticed are using their vehicles as storage facilities within the city. And uh we'll start addressing those in the future. Ski joint, it was a huge success, we had relatively few problems from the police department's perspective. Yes, we did allow open containers. Uh but I think there were twelve thousand four hundred people and down on Saturday, uh I think six thousand two hundred and twenty-three were drinking. And we were, we were being, uh but the mood was so festive, we had absolutely uh no fights that were reported. Uh we had two drunk drivers that I, uh that that were reported, that we never did catch, that I assume were associated with ski joining. Uh but relatively, relatively few police calls. We're gonna work with Duffy next year, we, under city ordinance, we can define an area where people can have open intoxicants. So we're gonna, uh it'll be easier for us to contain this chaos instead of trying to control them. So that's what we're gonna shoot for next year, every business owner that I've talked to had a record weekend. And that's next, I'm looking at our uh sales tax numbers. Uh I hope we can continue this trend for the rest of the year, we need more events like this in the city, as long as there are no problems. But thanks about parking, we told a couple vehicle owners, we did write a lot of parking tickets, uh but ski joining was absolutely fantastic. Uh recruitment, sadly, one of our candidates who was supposed to start the academy next month has decided to go work for a larger department, so we're gonna lose him March thirty-first. We had made it off a job offer to a deputy who I was hoping to start March thirty-first, he also took another position at another department. The good news is, we have three people who are interested. And uh two of them are post-certified, uh one, uh two are post-certified. Uh two are local, of those two, one is not post-certified, but the other is. So I'm in the process uh working with the city administrator, HR, to set up interviews for these three so we can try to fill the two open positions we have right now. We'll get there. Uh it's, and and then some of our officers who haven't been able to work because of medical issues are coming back, so we're getting there. We've been involved in several felony investigations over the past month, some we have brought to a conclusion, uh some have not, but all have generally been fruitful. Uh one was a delicate fraud investigation where a company in California had their email compromised. And uh 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 there uh there was a victim in Leadville that lost a substantial amount of money. Uh due to a, an ex-wife that was scorned, she took information to the Des Moines Police Department where a suspect was arrested. Uh and this is just a small portion of a criminal enterprise that is probably worldwide. So uh we're trying to encourage the FBI to take over this case, because I anticipate it's gonna be a multimillion-dollar case where citizens throughout the country were victimized by this criminal enterprise. So that was an interesting case to work, and it was interesting how it came to our attention. Hell hath more fury like a woman scorned. Uh we've had some windows broken downtown, we have a person of interest in those uh acts of criminal damage. A person of interest, we don't have, we don't have probable cause to arrest, but it just uh we, we know a person who was in the area when, when one of these incidents occurred. So we are going to uh track them down and speak with them, we're gonna question them and see what they have to say. Um we had an interesting menacing case about a month ago that we brought to a successful conclusion. Two gentlemen got a scuffle, one pulled the gun on the other, so we ended up uh uh identifying the person, we seized the weapon, and he is gonna be prosecuted. So uh we're involved in a couple other felony investigations, but we're staying busy, but we're making a lot of progress in the city of Leadville. And I will now answer any questions that anybody may have. New badges, we're testing out some new badges, uh the uniforms, I wore this for ski joining with a cowboy hat. And it was a huge hit. I even had a gentleman from Europe approach me and ask if I was real.
Could I just, I I think you're too, little, little too humble on the, on the initial story you told. So uh the mayor and I ran a conference and a friend of mine is the, is the finance manager at Chris Garland. She looked at me and she said, you know, I lost my wallet over last week, or she said I lost my wallet, I'm like, right now? And she's like, no, no, it was, it was over last week, and she's like, look. The air tag says it's in Leadville. And I said, give me that, give me a screenshot of that. And so I'm at the conference, I sent it to the chief, and I said, hey, do you know what this building is? And explained to him, he's like, I'm gonna go over there. I was like, okay. Not less than twenty minutes later, he texts me back, he's like, I've got it. And I said, I just took my phone over to the finance director, you should have seen her face, she's like. So anyway, we got it back, all the contents were in it, it was a great success story, but I I really appreciate that uh she was, she was floored that she got her wallet back with, with everything in it, so.
That's a great story. Any other questions for Chief Chalka?
Just one more comment, you were very, very visible on uh ski joining weekend, thank you for that.
Be bet, and I'm afraid I have to run because I'm the only city officer working in, and I have to hit run to go to.
Thank you, chief. All right, moving on to the fire department. Chief Dan of the fire.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So I have a, an annual report that I give out uh every year, somewhere around March or April, depending on when uh the PIO that I can get and collect all the information from year-end statistics. So I decided, since we have a little bit more time uh this evening, that I'll go over the annual report. Uh the first portion of it is just a letter from me, it kind of gives a, a just a real broad overview of kind of like what the department's all about, where our mission is, some of the things that we're, we're working on, or what we did work on the year before. Uh some of the accomplishments of capital improvement uh that we, that we were successful with. And uh and then some of the grants, whether they were closed out or um whether we uh are still utilizing them, and a safer grant just closed out uh in February or November for this year, so. Uh the next page, you'll see it's just our services, it's a big list of services. Uh we have uh the emergency services, community service, and then the community involvement that we do. And these just fluctuate throughout the year, depending on the needs of the community. These are just a, a highlight of some of the things that we do, but they've also changed throughout the year. Uh these are things you probably have already heard, uh actually, I'll, the long-term objectives, but I'll go over, uh Station Two is obviously complete. And uh it, the meeting room has been down, been utilized by multiple agencies for um meetings, but also for trainings down there, which has been great. Station Two was the command center for interlockens last year, as everybody knows. And public works and search and rescue, they're storing their equipment internal on, in the base space as it was uh designed. So it's a good multi-use um concept and everybody's using, utilizing it, and then the housing aspect is not only just for our residents, but the sheriff's deputies. Uh some sheriff's deputies have also used some of the housing. Last year, I think it was three different times, they hired personnel, and they needed housing in the district while they worked here. And we currently have one deputy uh that just moved out, so. Uh our long-term objectives, mitigation efforts, one of the things that uh uh Lori and Sarah just signed is an MOU that we're working with uh Upper Arkansas watershed collateral bond. And this is for a shipping program, they received grant funding from um the Colorado State Forest Service. So what we'll do over the summer, well, maybe on the, on the ends of uh it's six Fridays, and we'll probably do it maybe later season in the summertime. We'll get through our busy portion and then we'll get into this, and it's gonna be a shipping program for our community members, so there's a whole lot of outreach, we have a meeting Thursday to talk about at down at Station Two initially, and then we'll get all the information out to see what, what subdivisions would like to be able to do some mitigation efforts. And then we'll have like a process on how they set their slash of curbside or something like that, and then we'll get in there and we'll, we'll do a shipment program. And with the grant funding, we'll be able to pay some firefighters on their off-time to supplement, and then they'll be able to, we'll be able to get the work done that way. So this is a, this is a great collaboration and partnership with Arwick. Get back to this. You know, we're gonna continue to train and deploy seasonal wildland firefighters, uh I think that is the greatest experience that we can get is sending those firefighters out on wildland deployment, and also we know the benefits of everything that comes along with that, but the main reason is that training, so that when we have something in the district that we know a whole lot more and have that experience under our belt to be able to take, take care of things here at home. Uh I talked about the shipping program. We wanna build, uh I would like to still continue to build the, the tower down at Station Two, is one of the things that we had to reduce in the budget when we actually built that station. Just uh because we have the new tower up at Cache, and that's coming online here pretty soon, and that's for the DTR and under system. And if that tower goes online and we're able to build the tower down at Station Two, they'll be able to ping off one another, and then we'll be able to also get further south where we have a lot of um dead radios. So I would really like to be able to continue to move forward with that, and there's some other reasons why I'd like to, there's training opportunities, storage, um drying our hoses, but also maybe getting Verizon or somebody also to put um cell tower on there. Um and maybe get some royalties from that. So I, I don't know, that, that price of that tower just kept going up and up and up. Uh I think it started at like ninety-five, we got to like a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we just cut it out of the budget initially. Excuse me, out of HTC, uh we want to continue to, we're gonna take the nineteen shipping containers that are stacked right now, and we're going to dismantle that a little bit with um some cranes and build smaller props. I talked to Grant Jurey, he's our part-time captain, he's the one who runs the CNC uh fire academies and the associates program on fire science and technology. And what we'd like to be able to do is just build smaller props so that we can do more of like a um kind of like a um, oh, what do you call it, like a uh it's stable right now, but we'll be able to do stations a whole lot faster and be able to get a whole lot more people through training exercises, and then it's more powerful and more um it's more uh attractive to other agencies as well. Cause the bigger goal here is not just to have us and our local emergency services being able to utilize that training facility, but also bring in people, our neighbors, uh to be able to come and train with us, but then open, open it up regionally and hopefully have great success with that, and we'll start doing big trainings up here in, in Lake County, so that'll be great. Uh let's see. Uh then the next page here is our, our annual statistics. You'll see that we run a lot of rescues, a lot of medicals. We do some service calls, some good intents, some hazardous conditions, sometimes no fire, but a lot of those are, are um are hazmat calls that we run, we have some false alarms that Chief Bull continuously works on um to try to reduce those. We had thirty-four fires, whether it be something small to the interlock fire, but I said anything in between. Structural and wild, wildland. The next section of that is, is just, and this one might be a little confusing, since twenty seventeen, we had we're having calls at the same time, so like a tone will go off, we're on an emergency, another tone comes out. So another emergency is going on at the same time. Well statistically, as you can see the growth from twenty seventeen to twenty, twenty-two um has increased significantly when we're talking about having two emergencies at the same time or four emergencies going on at the same time, which you can only imagine, it's strange, not only on us, but the ambulance services on trying to take care of four emergencies at the same time, we had a head-on collision up at ninety-one. We have a structured fire going on, we have something else going on, it's, it's uh pretty stressful. So that's why initially, if the ambulance went to two ambulances at the same time, and also that's why we continue to grow as an agency as well, because of the growth and um the additional emergencies that we're seeing over time.
So is that chart showing the number of simul, number of instances per year where simultaneous calls happened?
Correct, that's correct, sir. So then uh I figured I, I put it in here for the last year, we're still talking about it in the management board, about Station Two, it's the next page. Uh this is kind of how, and these are just approximate numbers on how Station Two uh was funded. Uh you know, you have the dollar grant, you have the county, the city, the fire fund, uh donations. Uh we have uh public works doing a lot of the um in-kind work. This is just a, just a broad overview on how that station came about at two-point-six million dollars. And that's a steal in today's uh market for sure. I think the Salida Fire Station, if you haven't seen it yet, it's absolutely gorgeous, I think it was over fifteen million dollars, so. Uh we did a, uh we did a good job on, on actually really softening this budget, but actually getting a, a, a product that we can grow, so. Uh I just wanted to be able to keep that in there for one more year, and then you probably won't see it next year.
Is that the one right up the highway, the slight one?
It's off of Oak Street, so um so if you continue down through downtown, and you curves through, it's, and then it connects to um fifty, I believe.
It's, it's not like that big of a building for the price, I figured it'd be much larger, I mean, it's not, yeah, that's crazy.
Right. Uh so since twenty twelve, and this is the only, you know, the only marker that I have is from when I became chief, we brought in over four million dollars in grants. We brought in over four million dollars in grants and uh, and wildland revenue. So and of course, this supplements a lot of the equipment and also the capital that we do um and try to improve every single year. So that's just a, an approximate number of what we've brought in for grants to supplement and uh continue to grow appropriately with our equipment. And then the list that is down below, as you can see, and a lot of this was twenty twenty-four. We got a dump trailer that was from, that's for HTC specifically for all the stuff that uh is consumable out there. And that was through CNC funds and the fire fund. Hazmat trailer, uh, because we got rid of the hammer back to the South Central Region. We were able to spend five thousand um out of the operational fund and then we supplemented it with the fire fund. As you can see there for forty-four-ten. And then a Type Three engine is now being um, the annual payment is out of the fire fund, it's seventy-two thousand eight sixty-five. A tactical tender was paid off uh of two hundred and twelve thousand and that, that last payment was this last year. And that was paid for out of the fire fund. Two command vehicles are being replaced this year and then we're opening for Command Three next year. We purchased a UTV, as you've heard me say, and a trailer with donation funds from the community members. And we just received that, it's down at Station Two and it's getting outfitted by Bo Nickman and Cass and Bailey. They're going to do the work, they're going to put the slide in, the lights on, and they're going to get it operational for us. And it's going to be a great asset, uh especially if we can get into those areas where we can't get into with our bigger rigs. And then HTC infrastructure, I, I still need to come to you and the management board about uh what we want to do looking forward with getting infrastructure out there. There's electric on the corner, we want to run that in, maybe a well at some point and just build that facility out appropriately. And then Bill, and then we just received the roofing material between two shipping containers and a back wall for non-climate controlled uh pieces of equipment and that'll be built down at Station Two. I've got to go through the permitting process to be able to store our stuff that doesn't need to be inside in there. Like the trailers we just got, we want to protect those assets. And then here's just some general information, one through seven, talks about grants, um past grants, the things that have been closed out. Uh, the staffing responsibilities, each person at the department has programs. Uh, they can be big programs or like the new person comes in, they start out with little programs, but then everybody has responsibility next door and I think that's really important. I always call it the oil and machine. Without those kind of programs, we wouldn't be as successful as we are with everything that we do, leading up to the op, actual operational response. So um, and they do a great job of doing that. And I think that is about it. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thanks for the annual report, Chief.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any questions for Chief Derek? Forgot to visit the Southern Station for my first time for the One Community Project Meeting that was in the classroom. It's really cool, yeah, it was really cool to be in there.
Did you, did you go around and tour it?
I didn't, I saw the gym, cause my kids were playing in there. They were, you know, pushing some weights, but.
It was some leftover pizza from the refrigerator fridge.
But yeah, it's a, it's a really cool space, yeah.
I brought some back here to the station.
Exciting. Okay. Well, up next, HR with Ms. Fetters.
Oh, great, so I did send emails out to everybody, including council for training, so it is not an issue. It is me. Um, I have set up five different trainings um throughout the month of April. It's from nine to one, just so we have some more time between all three hours of training. Um, you can either come in any of those times to train for those different trainings we have, or you can do it individually um on your own time. But I can start assigning those once I start getting who wants to do it individually, who wants to do it as a group. Upcoming events is our Salsa Audit uh April sixteen. Um, and that's why we're trying to get all this set up so we can show them that we'll start doing this annually. And then April twenty-fifth is Bring Your Child to Work Day, which is going to be super fun. We have different uh tasks going on, uh Tour City Hall, Fire Station One, Police Department, Animal Shelter. I worked with Hillary uh on Wakers Bar employees design and uh we'll do some different activities and have them come in. So if anyone's interested on visiting that day, uh, I'm sure the kids will love it. We have a open vacancy for Street Department. We've had four applicants so far for that. Um, and like Laura said earlier, we're currently interviewing applicants for the animal control as well. Any questions, anything like that?
Uh, the Streets Department, that's the administrative, part-time administrative position.
Yes, and it's part-time, hopefully one day that will be full-time, but um we've had one local applying and uh three different, uh, one all made from where was it?
Benin Borough.
Yeah.
Oh, we wouldn't understand a word they said.
Yeah, so uh, it's funny, like we have all these super applicants, we're like, oh, okay, we're leaving.
They heard we had a pipe band, so. Any, any questions on the HR front?
I have one quick question on the training, we choose to do it individually, is it like online?
It's online and I can assign those. I just need you to confirm that email and then I can assign those to you through Salsa. Uh, you should have got an email um setting that up. So I set all those up today um with everyone's individual emails. So I wanted to let you know for sure it's not phishing, it is me.
And I appreciate Ms. Fetters doing this, this is part of our risk management. It's important, City Council, you are employees. So uh, last year when I was fussing about like, why do I have to do this and who made me do this? I realized it was me who made us do it, uh, we need to do it. Um, and, and I appreciate this program and rolling this out. It is part of reducing our insurance costs and also part of legal compliance. So uh, appreciate everybody getting it done.
Yeah, great, any other questions? Alright, thanks, Alicia. You too. Deputy City Clerk.
Um, Madam Mayor and members of, uh, council members. Um, so first of all, just start looking licenses, correct, short and sweet. Um, pretty much everyone is renewed for the year. I'm in the process of transferring yet again the liquor license for the Manhattan and to Golden Borough. Um, I have, this will be the second time I've transferred both of these licenses since I have taken over this role since last July. Um, so I would say I'm well versed in transferring a liquor license. But so just so you're aware, that's kind of what's happening in the liquor license world. Um, for business license renewals, that period has um pretty much dwindled down. I, I don't really have any more left and just waiting on a few folks who are still awaiting a fire inspection. But this was great, um, we did a lot of closing inactive business accounts, which is really awesome as far as cleanup, um updating those business contacts, which is another important thing for our notices to go out, like when we send out tax notifications and things like that. Um, and then it was really great to be able to help uh Chief Boyle get the annual fire inspection requirement fulfilled this year and initiate that aspect of our um process. So I'm very happy we held that. And then also, since I finished my report on Friday, we officially um, Ms. Hewitt and I are working with Casell to implement our business license public portal. Um, so that bill is coming along and we will soon have a, a nice online link and portal for folks to go to basically apply for a business license and renew it next year, um, which was another reason I really wanted to make sure we had contact information updated and things like that were cleaned up. Um, but so I'm really excited and hopefully once that's all actually good to go, I can do a quick demo for you all in my department report down the road, so you can see what we're working with. Oh, thank you. Yes, I just rolled both at the same time. Um, so on to the bulk of what I want to talk about this evening, which is the short-term rental project, which I think that's going to be the bulk of my life forever in this role. Um, that's okay. Um, as far as tax compliance go, I'm going to give you a little bit more detailed information on how many people have actually replied to me um to initiate the steps of either getting a license and so becoming compliant that way or paying us back taxes. So it's been exciting, I've actually had several people reach out. Um, and then the other big thing, before I really get into those numbers, um, accurate and up-to-date parcel data is really essential and that's something that I'm still working with. I got an email this morning from the county's new GIS and mapping person. Yay, I'm very excited, um, everyone is, I'm sure, I'm sure you'll be excited to know that. Um, but so that's great, so she said, please give her some time to get acclimated to the role, cause I think she just started like yesterday. Um, so she said, um, that she would be happy to help me with the project and get me updated parcel data and everything I need so that I can then send it to Muni reps and we can get updated there, which in turn will then make the um data mining that Deckard does more accurate as well. So it's a, it's happening, it's, it's a big chain of events, but it's actually happening. Um, so without that mapping data, I have uncovered just a slew of accounts that were either um still active and shouldn't have been because either someone sold their home and then that wasn't noted because we don't have that parcel data um from the assessor as well as um things like people just decided to not use a short-term rental um license anymore. They did, they found a long-term renter and I actually had a, I have two people specifically tell me um, we have no longer, we no longer have a short-term rental license, we have two, we have long-term renters, which was great to report back as far as housing for our community. Um, and then, um, so basically I'm more, I'm setting you up to explain that some of the outreach I did um basically was somewhat inaccurate just based on that data. Um, luckily people were, um, most of them were generally really nice and just, you know, informed me that they either sold their house or what, what the specific situation was. So then I was able to go in and update things myself and Muni reps. So again, more cleanup, slow but happening. Um, and so as for right now, we have had five people reach out. Um, two of those were non-licensures and three for outstanding tax payments. Um, and I, I do have to share that two of those cases more resulted from uh mostly outdated information from just former staff or I think just a misunderstanding with just some of the trouble we've had trying to really define and streamline the STR program. Um, but those people were great and have been great to work with. They want to know who they, you know, how can they pay, how quickly can they pay, what do they owe? Um, one of those folks even did their own um back research and pulled together their accounting information for us and found out how much they owed and said, here's what I owe you, does this look right? Um, and so she basically is gonna cut a check and we'll deposit it and that'll be that one. Um, but so right now, those totals for the five, the two licensure ones, which would basically cover their two licenses, they had to pay the back taxes for those years, uh, that, that year. And then the other three people, their back taxes. Um, we're looking at approximately forty-five hundred dollars right now. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, um, but it's definitely something. And the fact that the outreach is working makes me very happy and the fact that people are willing to work with us um is, is great. Um, but also the short-term rental workshop, I think, was a really good um way of kind of, I could call it the re-grand opening or grand reopening basically of the program to kind of reestablish ourselves, let folks know that we're working to improve things, um, just kind of answering any questions they have. And I want to thank Council member Lily, who showed up for the workshop and really answered some hard questions eloquently. So thank you very much for being there um and making my life a little easier. Um, and then also Alex Willis, Planner One, was there, Adam Ducharme, and it's been him before he left, obviously the children are in bed now. And then Nadine from Traverse Hospitality actually came, one of our company and management companies. So we had a really nice um overall kind of um, I guess, how would you say it? Just overall, um, we had, we had every facet covered really, so we could answer a lot of questions. Um, I think people felt informed and I really would like to make it more of an annual workshop that we do at the start of renewal season for folks, just so we can update on any code evolutions that have happened, um, any updates to the website, anything like that. I just want to make it a, an annual thing at this point so that we can continue um championing the short-term rental program. And additionally, there's one more chunk in there that you might have read at the bottom where I'm working with our finance director and representative to the Department of Revenue. Um, and we have really identified the tax revenue um situation as being somewhat misinterpreted on, at, at a level. And we're talking more about how the county imposes a lodging tax, but it does not apply within the Lendville city limits. So what that really means um is that when the county tracks lodging related revenue, it does own a different geographical footprint than the city does as far as our STR tax, our census tax. Um, so basically when you think about um the mineral, I mean, excuse me, the Delaware, that, that is all being filed basically as one, even the food, even the, you know, the, that, that whole how they do their lodging, you know, they're a hotel technically, but um basically their food revenue and everything all gets filed into that um same line item, if you will. And so that has been basically skewing some of the data that, that, that the county is seeing for the tax revenue they, that is owed to them, or they think is owed to them. Does that make sense? Crystal's women are explaining it that I am.
Are you referring to the discrepancies pointed out by the tourism panel, Elsa and Adam, like that discrepancy number? Or is there a different?
No, it's, it's related to that. Um, unfortunately, we just didn't know about that. I mean, how that they, they, the sales are basically filed to include meals, alcohol sales, retail purchases and things like that. Um, I, I frankly have no idea. Um, and we, someone from the GOR nicely um shared that information with us. And so Ms. Hewitt and I are hoping to, now that we know this, we work with the county um together so that we can better have an understanding of just how things are distributed back to the county or community. I think I said that correctly. We don't, any other questions about that particular matter or anything else? I said, um.
Yeah, on the short-term rentals, I know you said you've been able to collect forty-five hundred. It's from, from the work you've done, is your sense that that's the tip of the iceberg? And there are a million more waiting out there?
No.
Or are we just about done?
No, I, I feel like there's a handful more out there, but with what I've been finding with that data, it was like close, the going in and having to actually close the accounts, um, but there's not as many as we thought. And so I'm really looking forward, and that's, that's great, as much as I'm going to go, I would like more money to come into us. Um, I'm also happy that we don't have the compliance issues that we really thought we had. And that's, that's me, that's great. So um, I'm really looking forward to the new GIS mapping person giving me that updated um list because I also, I don't want to get everyone's hopes up and I'm almost somewhat afraid to say this online meeting. There might be more Class Two licenses than we really have thought. Uh, so there potentially will not be a waitlist come summer. So, yes, that would be great. More Class Two licenses available. Available, not laboration, sorry, thank you. Um, not that we're waiting up the cap, but um, the cap is not really, keep it, don't worry.
But then based upon the updated data, we would get um parcel information. There may be licenses that are not in use or were, were, you know, they're not transferable. So those licenses would be freed up if we get more accurate parcel data. And we have people on the waiting list.
Yeah, I'm excited to hopefully deliver some really good news in a couple of weeks. That's great. And then I can advertise that there are more licenses available, not going to live in that book. I know I had a lot of Realtor inquiry about people wanting to buy homes here, but not because of our short-term rental waitlist.
Kind of on that same note, in the county right now, we continue to have about fifteen open licenses. So seems like we got our numbers about right. If these open up a little bit, that'd be great, knows if we really did balance it.
I have a few questions for you, Sarah. How will the GIS mapping help what you're doing? Like where, how is that, yeah?
Um, so Muni reps basically have me fill out a template, or well, I haven't yet, but when we initially signed up with Muni reps, and this is supposed to be happening quarterly, I found out. Um, basically we took GIS assessor data of all of our parcels in the city Lendville jurisdiction that shows who owns what, um, and that kind of thing, and then we give it to Muni reps and their team builds out the profiles for each individual property slash parcel. Um, and it remains inactive until I then go in and assign the owner to that account. Therefore, they then can. Therefore, they then can go in and use it.
Meaning if they have a short term rental license?
Mm-hmm. So that's how it's connected. Um, and basically, yeah, so basically like once I send them these, I'm able to send them these quarterly updates, which will be great cause then I'm not gonna have to go in to each individual person and reference it with across our, with the assessor record and say, does this person own this house still? Um, and then go on and look at the data mining and say, are they renting it also? So once we have the accurate parcel data that's showing who owns what properties and where.
Hmm.
That will allow MuniRabs to update any accounts that are active that should be inactive and vice versa.
GIS mapping data is built upon a spreadsheet. So the, the spreadsheet data um that builds the map, map is based upon is the information that's, is that shared.
Hmm. Oh, okay.
I did not know that either, but it's, it's kind of fascinating how they build it out on the backend. Um, and it does take a lot of the work off of my plate where they literally will just code it in to the different accounts. And it's, it's really nice.
Hmm.
Um, rather than me having to check through different sources to find out who owns what, who is using it, kind of thing.
Yeah.
And then that would mean I would take the assessor data, I would set up a thing without that person. I was going into the actual maps and property searches and having to look things up individually and determine like day of sale property and things like that. Um, parcel numbers and everything and then building it like that. And so.
If you could just look at the map and click on it, that's a lot faster.
Uh, no, so for them, the, the GIS folks will kind of like Jayden said, they'll put everything on like a giant spreadsheet that I will then send to MuniRabs and they will put it all on our platform for us.
Okay.
So. I was getting there.
So will that reduce your workload?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a scan for like, it would reduce my workload as far as just, cause that's what took so long with that tax, back tax situation was. You know, I had, I probably had about twenty-four people reply. And I had to go in to look at each individual case and figure out, you know, depending on what their specific scenario was, you know. What was accurate, could I close the account, that kind of thing.
Wow.
So I didn't wanna just close the account for someone like say I sold my house. And I always make sure that, okay, you may have sold your house, but did you pay your taxes for that last year you have a short term rental license kind of thing? So.
Yeah, good news.
A lot of.
Um. Would you, I think you've mentioned in a previous meeting, the idea of um establishing agreements with some of the larger STR platforms.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And um.
Yes, and yes. I have great news on that, actually.
Go for it.
I thank you so much for reminding me of those, cause that's gonna happen after my report. Um, Adam Ducharme, I actually have a meeting tomorrow, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, tomorrow Wednesday. We have a meeting Wednesday morning with someone from Airbnb, um, who is in their tax, their voluntary tax um program, basically. And so we're very excited about that to go and have a conversation. And I'm just gonna get some basic information on how do we set it up, what that looks like, what the benefit is for us. I don't know if you're a freedomer on that, or could I maybe include you for tax questions and you? But um, we're really excited that just got arranged um this morning.
And so just to, for the ten thousand feet on this is right now, we have the uh short term rental owners remit the tax directly to us. They need to calculate it. They need to figure out when they rented it, when rented their property and remit us the correct amount of tax. So we know who paid what when. Uh, you can have the short term rental companies, so the big ones, Airbnb and Verio, collect it for you. Um, if you're a short term rental owner and we would need to have an agreement with the, those entities. And so those are the biggest ones. And so we would do um agreements with them. And then they could, they would collect the tax for the property owner at the time the money is paid for the short term rental. And then those, um, Verio or, or Airbnb remits the money directly to us. The reason there's positives and negatives, it's a lot more efficient, it's a lot less work for us. Because then we don't have to make sure it's remitted, all these issues, it's, it's all done when the person pays for the Airbnb, it gets paid at that point. The issue is that um the, the companies just remit it in one big chunk of money. They don't tell us what address paid and how much and when. So the advantage is it's more likely maybe to be collected cause it's paid at the time that the, the, the reservation is paid. But we wouldn't have the data and so there's positives and negatives, but we're exploring it only because this, as you can see, takes up a lot of stat time. And maybe it's worth it to just get the big, um, you know, chunk of money and not maybe know and have it be less stat time and be more efficient. And so that's what we're exploring with. Um, we had a couple of meetings with Mr. Ducharme, the three of us, and the issue was really connecting with the right people at Airbnb and Verio. But I think we're on that. Yeah, that's good news.
Would a, would a compliance company agreement be able to catch that even if we internally weren't able to or?
Well, the idea that we're kind of touring with this, pointing with this, it's still having to basically kind of like have, you still have to submit something.
Right.
Where you wouldn't obviously submit your payment, but you would go in and click like a, I, I'd have to do it basically, an electronic app. Day, but where you would go in and I'd create a workflow for them, just like they have for how they would bet right now. And instead of actually putting in the tax information, they would click, I, yeah, it's already remitted via Airbnb, Verio, whatever it is. And that would act as the, the catch in the system so that then hopefully they. So then basically MuniRabs would show them as compliant and not. Um, and.
And but your, your question, maybe the data mining.
Right.
Yes, so, so the data mining still would show who's renting on the short term rental platforms.
Right.
Um, so yes, we can still data mine and save.
Looked, sounds great.
That's great. I have, I have one more thing that I forgot to update you all on that we just decided um yesterday, I believe, when you and I spoke. Um, we are gonna transition from Zoom.
Uh, yes.
To Google Meet. Um, we will, we will roar our, our meetings, for our meetings, for our, our A T C, for planning zoning. We'll talk about this, don't panic.
Yeah.
Um, you're gonna be realizing I didn't tell you this, I didn't let you know that. Um, but because it's already included in our licensing contract that we have with Google and it does everything that Zoom does in form, so it'll save automatically to our Google Drive, which is what we use to save everything anyways. Um, it does literally all the same things that Zoom does. However, it will also do subtitles during our meetings, so I can do closed captionings as I'm running a meeting, which I know is, I think, I think to me it's a big deal cause sometimes people have hard time hearing on Zoom when they're online. And so the closed captioning thing to me was a big sell. Our IT guy, um, Mr. Rubenowitz said, you know, it's included in our licensing package, which we already paid for. So that would save us the two hundred and fifty dollars a month that we're paying Zoom. And so, you know, that's a nice little annual chunk that we will be then saving. So. Um, we're not gonna do this immediately. It's something we're gonna make sure folks are comfortable with. But it has all the same public facing features, like a shared link. Um, basically it will then also work with our calendar. So everything is already on the calendar. You can just go click and join. It's, it's just a lot faster, a lot easier and it's cheaper. So. That's, that's technically now all I have.
Good news. Any other questions from Miss Bushman? Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. Community development and planning.
Good evening. My department report is not included for Friday, back when I was out of town last week. Uh, but it is now available online and you're packing. We have it sharing on the screen. And uh, Sarah, maybe just look through to the first.
Yes.
I was sorry, the second spreadsheet. Then I, yeah, that one right there, keep it right there for now. Um, I have five uh key updates for you tonight. Um, most of them are related to strategic plan objectives. Um, and a lot of these things won't be new things, but I just wanna start off with comprehensive plan updates for the one community project. Uh, we have some statistics that are coming in from the engagement that we have done so far. Really in the, um, the second of four or five phases for this project, which is the assessment phase. Uh, so right now we're looking around maybe just over five hundred uh forms that we have collected from community members uh related to uh what they value out of their community, what their concerns are, what their aspirations are for uh the future. And uh a little over seven hundred um individual contacts. Um, so basically about maybe two hundred people that we have additionally that have, we've engaged with, that have filled out forms. Uh, we, we have ways to go. That's just an update on where we are at right now. Uh, and we are, we are doing a lot of engagement. We have a lot more to do um throughout this phase, this assessment phase and throughout this project. That's where we're at right now. Uh, we are recognizing some gaps in the engagement. Uh, so these are areas that we're gonna um really start focusing on, those gaps and, and, and so this. Take a preface, this was saying there are other areas that we're engaging really well, certain community groups um that uh certain demographics we're engaging with real well. Um, but in terms of our gaps, uh generally folks under the age of nineteen, uh we need to do a better job there. Uh, we need to see some more engagement with um unincorporated Lake County residents. Uh, we're seeing great engagement with, um, within Sidlance. Um, absolutely, we need to better engage our Hispanic, our Latinx community members. Uh, it's a huge focus. I'll talk about that a little more. Uh, also our construction industry, uh workers, small business, uh small businesses. Our education and health, uh, and, uh, employment sectors and families and also our commuters. And there are overlaps with, uh, with some of those, um, some of those groups. In other words, there, um, there could be folks who identify with mu- multiple of those groups. Uh, in terms of, uh, this is not an exhaustive list, but some of the strategies that we're working on right now to um better engage with those, uh, with those gaps. Uh, would be, um, just continuing to utilize our approximately fifty person engagement team, uh, which are community connected, people are well connected within the community. Um, focusing more on, um, kind of like stimulating conversations as small groups between community members. Um, doing pop-ups and using, uh, you know, throughout the community. Um, we had, I think, uh, pop-ups just, um, just within the past week, several throughout the community. Um, and also just better using, utilizing technology, um, some variety of, uh, technology platforms. Um, and then, uh, I can elaborate on this one, u- utilizing paid community connectors um to, um, to basically be ambassador, ambassadors and ha- and have small group conversations, uh, one-on-one conversations and that those are again targeting some of these gaps that we identified. And also using, um, all the resources that Full Circle has to offer, um, and utilizing some of their programming. Uh, it'll be upcoming story, storytelling events. Um, I think this is gonna be branded as like Yak style storytelling events. And that'll be an, uh, event at, at Frig, um, including an event at Frig. And then also just in terms of our commuters, uh, trying to figure out ways to, um, connect with, um, folks who use transit, uh, some stage, um, included. And last thing I'll say about the one community project is kind of the next stage in terms of our elected and appointed officials will be trying to schedule, um, opportunities for our commissions, our planning zoning commissions for city and county to meet and collaborate and begin discussing, um. Um, this as in joint work sessions. Uh, so we, you know, we met on that today and we'll be scheduling those in, uh, coming weeks. And then, um, this will be kind of my first plug and I'll be meeting with Lori about this and, um, talking about this with her at future meetings. But opportunities for city council to meet with these, via A T C, potentially in a joint work, work session, specifically focused on the comprehensive plan. Uh, so that's the first you'll hear of that. So a quick plug and, um, we'll come back to more, uh, with the possibilities for that later. Uh, that's, that's related to, uh, the community, city and county collaboration, which is objective thirteen in your strategic plan. Now move on to permitting and code enforcement software. Um, lots of updates on this. Um, we had kickoff meetings, uh, as recently as today, but with cloud permit. So this will be a software company we are using for permitting and code enforcement software. And we'll be having weekly implementation meetings, uh, scheduled right now conservatively. I'm, I'm guessing that this will be kind of a May, um, full implementation going live for code enforcement. And then probably June or July for land use and, uh, permit. Uh, move on to P U D inclusionary zoning. So this is, um, in terms of your, uh, your housing section of your strategic plan. This is one of, one of the objectives. Um, we do not have a budget this year in twenty twenty-five for our department for using a, uh, a consultant to draft a code amendment. Um, and that code amendment will essentially require, uh, an ordinance that means our existing planned unit development, uh, chapter and also creates a new chapter regarding affordable housing, but it could also likely be titled something like, uh, community, uh, community housing. Setting down the rules and terms and conditions for deep restricted housing. Um, had a meeting with the, uh, Lake County bag and, um, uh, we talked about collaborating, using their funding for, um, from their funders, direct consultant, um, who's done previous code consults at work for the city. And, uh, to draft, uh, these ordinances and bring those to you hopefully within the next six months. Uh, so that is, uh, there's definitely some progress related to that, um, that strategic plan objective. Uh, it's kind of highest priority for my department for, uh, for coding that's right in front of you this year.
Hmm.
I'll move on to, um, my fourth and five updates, which would be, uh, just update general updates from our, our two commissions, planning zoning commission and historic preservation commission. So we've just wrapped up with both commissions goal setting for the year, uh, for twenty twenty-five. And, uh, story short, both commissions, um, understand, appreciate and incorporated uh, the strategic plan objectives that, um, council set for our department into their objectives for the year. And they have additional things that they want to work on. Um, and so that is complete. And we just completed a joint commission training with, um, the Department, State Department of Local Affairs three weeks ago. And that was, uh, generally related to comprehensive plan, uh, legal training on how to run meetings, conflicts, adventure, interests. Um, the list goes on. Uh, it was a two hour joint training, uh, and that went really well. And then the last update I'll give, and this is related to, um, your strategic plan, um, objective for economic and business development. Uh, for historic district surveys, we just wrapped up the, uh, surveys of a hundred and four structures for West Eighth Street and West Ninth Street. Those have been submitted to the state. That was under a, um, certified local government grant that we received from the state office of, uh, historic preservation. And so, um, that is under kind of final review with the state for them to accept that. Now that we've wrapped, wrapping that project up, we are continuing to, uh, we're kind of stepping into our next surveying project, which is, um, surveying or referring my notes here, cause I'm gonna butcher this if I try to go off memory. This is, um, two hundred and twenty-nine structures on West Elm, West Chestnut and West Second Street.
Hmm.
And then a hundred and eighty-three structures on, so the East Ninth, Tenth and Eleventh Streets. Uh, so that's a total of, um, four hundred and twelve structures. And then in addition to that, a district, uh, historic district wide, um, historic context survey. We, so we received a grant from the state, um, last year, state historical fund grant for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And so basically we were, we have a meeting with the state next week, um, for our kickoff meeting to start, um, like an R F P process. Dire consultant to, um, to start that survey project for over four hundred structures. And, uh, those are my five key updates and most of those relate to your strategic plan. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Maybe not a question necessarily directly for you, but I know we have ARPA funds, uh, that we haven't utilized yet that were earmarked for housing and was specifically earmarked for? Like homelessness and housing, but it was very broad in its intention. Um, I wasn't sure if those would be potential funds for that. I guess also just to talk about them since they still have yet to be undeclared, um, directly. But, um, if for whatever reason the L C bag doesn't work out, would that be a potential avenue you'd be willing to seek or?
I mean, I think to be blunt, I would, I would consider any type of funding for consultants, uh, for this year. That, um, because we, we essentially just kind of had to reallocate that to the comprehensive plan. Um, what we normally have is a budget item and which is great, but, um, but we, we do have code amendment work that will get done this year. Um, so I would, I would be, I would consider any available funding that will allow
Hmm.
the city to use a consultant, um, cause I can give this a couple hours a week, but we need basically a consultant to work on this kind of full time for, for many, many weeks over the next, you know, over the next several months so that we can, um, and then I can kind of pick it up and take it through the legal. Basically, you know, the, uh, the public hearing ordinance adoption process.
Right. And, and I guess I bring that up also, cause, um, some considerations that we should have is getting ahead of the curve of called the state, um, uh, in terms of our, um. Updating some of our building code. I know that we tend to kind of wait until the very last second to, uh, stay up to code at to whatever newest standards the state releases. Um, but it might be beneficial for us to consider getting ahead of the curve on that instead of waiting until we're, uh, forced to adopt a new code. I think the last one we adopted was the twenty eighteen. One.
Correct.
Um, so, uh, just a consideration, I guess. Um, I think that's gonna be. I think that's going to be more and more important as we go into. These, some of these considerations that I saw in here with, you know, annexations and considered developments. Think it'd be important for us to have some of those things and places for those specific developments as well.
Yeah, I think my initial reaction would be, I think the, the lower hanging fruit would be the zoning code amendments. And I think that the, the updating to, I think what would be the, the next, it would be the twenty twenty-one. International building codes. It's a, that's a bigger conversation and, you know, and there, and there, I think, there's, you know, pros and cons. For one of, one of the cons, you know, for example, would be. There's correlation between increased, like basically a more updated building codes and housing costs potentially. I can increase the cost of building to bring buildings up. Because the twenty-eight, the twenty-one codes do have energy efficiency. Which a lot of local contractors and building community may not be ready yet to, to meet those. And certainly there's a lot of pros in terms of energy efficiency and cost of homeownership, et cetera. So I think it's just, you know, in, in summary, I think that I would, I would be willing to consider any type of funding for, for zoning code amendments. And that, that is a lower hanging fruit than the building code updates at this point in time.
Let's see, one sec Steve, any other council member questions for Mr. LaShaw?
Is there anything new on the rail yard development or is that status quo?
Yeah, there, there are, there are definitely updates. I would say I've probably been communicating. You know, at least, you know, once every few months to, to this, this council that we remain in enforcement mode. We have multiple agreements with high country developers, that the developer is, you know, technically in violation of. A lot of these are really down to like a few remaining punch list items that are important punch list items, but they are. You know, in terms of a numerical list, there are relatively few items to complete. So, so you know, there, there's good, good and bad there. We are really just really struggling with getting the developer to complete those last few remaining items. Because they are important, we need to remain in enforcement mode and use the enforcement provisions that we, that we have. Which the ones that have the most effect are, are controlling issuance of building permits and certificates of occupancy. And so I would say the, the, the key things that we're, we need, needing from the developer right now, just kind of comprehensively. With, in phase one, we need to, we have a soil on the east side that captures stormwater flow. That's prevented from inflating structures on the far east side. That needs to be finished and completed and fully lined with, with rock. And we need to have circular street trees installed and irrigation among the parks. And then the Mountain View Drive extension, which is kind of in between phase two and phase three. There's some punch list items there just regarding easements that need to be recorded for utility lines that were installed as built drawings. From surveyors, engineers, et cetera. So relatively few still important items. I think we have communicated to the developer that I basically propose a comprehensive plan for the developer to. Move this development forward as they have planned, you know, continuing into phase two. And show them that how, these are all different steps that would be required in order for you to. In order to continue developing, because all three or four contracts we have throughout the different phases are related to each other. And we're, we're not getting much traction there, I guess in the past month or two in terms of having that conversation for moving things forward.
So our attorney, we, we put the whole comprehensive as Mr. LaChance, since we put, we put everything in one letter. So developers retained an attorney, so we're communicating with the attorney and we included in there the demand for the. Two hundred thousand dollar plus for the completion of the Mountain View, Mountain View Drive. That we, we paid and we're supposed to be reimbursed by the developer. So we, we put all that forth to say, these are all the issues. We put it in one letter. We said, this is everything that needs to be dealt with. And that letter went out a while ago and we haven't heard back. And so we have requested today Ms. Grady to follow up and see if there's any response from Mr. Lincoln and our Mr. Attorney.
Thank you.
I should note that the, the phase two PUD has, has expired.
So the developer have to do a new PUD.
It seems like a pretty big deal. Is that a big deal? For those listening on the radio, there's head nodding and an affirmative for that being a big deal. Did you have something else, Julie?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you Chapin. All right, on to the financials. Is it something you could ask them outside of this meeting, like? No, email or? Okay, thanks.
Good evening. Um, just some quick updates for you and then I'll take questions. Um, I was able to transfer back, excuse me. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand four thirty-six from the general fund or the Lake County account back to Colorado Trust. And we had, I had to transfer funds over in January to cover the E nine one one payment. So we've gotten the first installment of property tax for those payers that, that. Split their payments for February. So with that receipt, I was able to put some of that money back to. Colorado Trust to earn all those funds. And we still owe four hundred and five thousand from checking back to Colorado Trust. For the amounts that were transferred over from the Tigger House and other ministries. So once we see how the property tax came in, I will reimburse Colorado Trust so we can earn more money of our, of our investments there. Lost my, lost my mouse here. Um, quick update on fire, the Sabre Grant. Ended on February eleventh. So I have a meeting tomorrow with the fire department to go over those final reports. And get reimbursement for that, the period of reimbursement is. February third of twenty-four through February eleventh of this year. And I think at the number three parts I pulled earlier, I think we're looking at about probably a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. To reimburse those salaries going forward. Those all roll up under the fire admin, so we will find those. Let's see, as Jane Harrison mentioned earlier, the, we did receive the sales tax numbers earlier. This week, last week, I guess it was for the January sales tax collective for the half percent. On two, we have thirty-seven thousand three ninety-two. And so we'll see where that takes us. I did do a spreadsheet with one number. I will work on developing something to go along as we move forward with that. Let's see. As Mrs. Bushman mentioned earlier, she and I have been meeting and working with Cassell on the payment portal. This will replace the current payment portal once we get it all established. The, as she mentioned, the business license portion of it is going to be really slick. And hopefully business owners will be able to go in there, fill out your information. And then it'll go through an approval process, whether you're new or existing, if you update phone numbers or whatever. And then, and then it'll be brought into Cassell. So it should be streamlined, some of that processes. We will also do that with the other online payments that we receive for, for parking tickets. I will work with planning to see how their software will work if we, if we need to keep that portion. Animal shelter payments, any of those online payments that we take. Currently the payers pay with credit card, but we will have the option to allow them to pay with credit card for. A, a bank account for E C H payments. The neat thing about this is that when payments are made online, once we have everything set up and mapped. They will, it will talk to Cassell in real time. So those payments will update to the G L ledger instead of tracking them when, you know, recognizing. When was this payment, who was it made by? And whether or not other departments were aware. So that's a bit there. Short terminals is, which my mentioned, working with the state on, you know, just trying to better understand. The remnants, especially for those, those. Mostly it's going to be the hotels and hotels that may offer beverages, food, merchandise. That they, their six, their tax. Their sales tax account is one account, right? They pay that and then, and then that's. That is what is received from the reports from the, the county. And then the former reports that the county was providing, I had, they were. Grossing up those sales tax amounts and then multiplying them by the four point nine two. To come up with the amount for sales tax, or not sales tax, accommodations tax that we should be receiving. But that doesn't take into account those other factors, factors that are not subject to. So that, that's one of the reasons I think our numbers still jive with what their predictions were. I did meet with a couple of the finance folks at the county today. They have updated and revamped their sales tax spreadsheet that they sent over. It's, it's pretty slick. And I'm, I'm going to work with them on getting some information on. Who they are showing towards the end of twenty-one as being. Subject to any accommodations tax before it was rolled down with the new, new tax. And broken out, the city was broken out from accounting. To see if we can handle that, those payer names. And see if there's any others that we're lacking. Ms. Bushman has done a ton of outreach. We, we worked together on just trying to reconcile those numbers. So as I get more information from the county, you know, and just. Trying to cross reference things, people just. They, I did ask the state for that information and they could not provide that because the M O U is between county and the. The state as it is, the, we have an M O U, it is the state as well. They can't show the county's information, they can't share the city's information. But they said if the county is willing, the bank will share information. Some of the information is very privileged. All I want is like the list of names and where, where they set up on short-term rentals. When, when the change was made, how the county, the county just said. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Hewitt?
One, in the report you mentioned, there is a report that the online sales was roughly twenty percent of the taxes month. That's, is that something you have access to in terms of that type of information generally or? Because it'd be interesting to see how much of that over time has been dedicated from online sales. Because I, I think it's a fair assumption to make that the majority of those are probably from residents.
I think isn't that the, the information that Ms. Laurentian was providing? So when you export reports from the state, there's an actual. Column for those types of sales. Of what I have seen, maybe some of them aren't handling them out correctly based on, you know, I mean, we know that they don't have a sound. Along with this here in town, but they're making sounds. So I don't know how accurate that is, but that's, that's we have to go on is whether or not there's an asterisk in the box that says they're. Remote sellers.
I see. And generally is that, like, is this percentage, albeit with that caveat. Around where we've seen it before or you've seen it before?
So I just started adding that in the last few months after. So that, it, it seems to be pretty, pretty close every time.
Yeah, that is interesting to see. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Any other questions from Ms. Hewitt? Now we need to review the bills, right?
Well, we're going to do sales tax conversion. No, just any questions?
Anybody have questions or comments about the sales tax or accommodations?
Is that what you were referring to and you said we're bucking the trend? Because it, it's interesting that, I mean, last year we were consistently down over twenty twenty-three and this year we're over.
No, actually, well, we weren't consistently down. I, we can pull that, Ashley, here we have.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
We, we were down for a whole month, but I think overall by the end of the.
Oh, slightly up, yes.
We were, we were slightly up, which is above it. It's, you know, just from casual conversations at, at the CAS meeting, Colorado Association of Ski Town meetings. Said most other reserve towns, mountain towns were, were down. You know, maybe eight percent, twelve percent. And we are bucking the trend because we were higher, we've been higher every year. And, you know, so for January, I just have this, for this year, we're, we're, we're definitely. Now I've lost all those buttons that you showed me earlier today on how to, the, the county got with a great new spreadsheet that has great data. But I, we, I needed help navigating that. We are up, we were up January and, and the county let us know that that was due to a big purchase, but we are also up February. So between January and February of this year, which doesn't include ski drawing, because we won't see the ski drawing money until May, I think we calculated. We are already up a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over last year.
Yeah, that includes a big purchase in January.
Correct.
So the numbers are the reporting period. And so if, like, if we were really to, to look at it, January is going to be December actuals.
Or November.
December.
Oh.
Well, don't they have, they, they report in January, so the reporting period is January.
Oh, you're reporting where, gotcha.
Yeah, so when I met with the county earlier today and I, I was talking to, to Will and Nikki down there. It was because, because the way we report is on reporting period, which January was December. And businesses were trying to spend down their budget. So there were, there were a lot, like the county's portion was over a million dollars and they couldn't figure out why. But climax line is, is within the county. And so, you know, if they were spending down their budget and, and purchasing equipment. You know, on that.
So. Good feedback from a lot of the vendors on Harrison Avenue, that business remains low. What do you attribute the sales tax increase to?
Well, so we hear from some businesses that they are down. Where we can actually, so Adam Ducharme said, because I mentioned it to him, I said, one, one merchant is telling us they're down. And he said, yeah, that merchant is down, that is correct, but he can pull up the, um, place or AI and he's like, the others aren't. So it, it, it depends. And I think the issue really is, is when we see the sales tax numbers, they are consistently up. So I, I don't know how to explain that. If, if, if every business is down, then our sales tax number should be down. It should be a direct correlation. I think, you know, the fact that our sales tax has been up every single year indicates that. We are bucking the trend. I don't know what it is, but I think if you, if you can. Let me know, we can have Adam run some of the data on some of the businesses. I don't. You know, I generally have casual conversations with whoever I talk to, you know, whether it's the, you know, candy store, the bike shop. You know, I generally have casual conversations with whoever I talk to, you know, whether it's the, you know, candy store, the bike shop, and I'm like, how's business? They're like, it's good.
Yeah.
You know, the, the restaurants will tell you the business is good. Um, there's a handful of businesses that will tell you their business is, is good. Um, you know, there's some that have a little hiccup because of changes that are in town and, and, you know, that maybe they have to adjust their business model. Uh, but I don't, I don't know. I, I.
I guess I was just wondering if we see any other drivers. Other than climax spending down their budget, which makes perfect sense, that would, would show a significant increase in sales tax. This, I mean.
Yeah, unfortunately, I could not.
Passer down, it's gradual and, and our increases. Are substantial, so there, there has to be something else that's changing that we're not seeing.
And I'm not privy to that information because that goes to the county.
Right. It's saying the extent to look for and see.
So much, you know, it's based on industry.
What really is growing, because.
Yeah.
Even if some of the businesses are, I mean, I know Melon's on is doing great. I mean, I see Melis coming to my shop all the time, which is a wonderful thing for everybody.
Right.
But things tend to be pretty gradual, and this is more than that. So I'd love to know if there's something else that we should be watching.
Um, I don't know, because if you look at some of the changes that have happened on Harrison Avenue, for example, so some of the, um, businesses that. Or that were vacant, that were, weren't retail, so if you, I mean, you look at the Level Exchange, Level Exchange is in that place now. They're, they're, you know, they've got a hopefully a good business going on, at least I think they do. And then you look at things like the candies, uh, Rocky Top Candy Store, so that was manufacturing before, that wasn't retail at all. And so now that's a business, so I, I do think some of that, um, you look at the famous, you look at places like that.
Sure.
So.
Well, our, in our, our retail has definitely increased. We've lost a couple of spaces, but we've gained more than we've lost in the last year, for sure.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, it's just interesting to see that much of a change. Something else is contributing that we, we need to be able to keep an eye on.
Yeah, and I think that's it, you know, it, it has to be somewhat manual, because I don't, we're not privy to that actual data. So that's why I ask folks every time, I'm saying like, how's business?
And I can send out, uh, I can share out like the spreadsheet that the county sends out to. Um, and, and they did just rebound, but there's, there's a lot of features.
It seems like this would be something that would be up Adam's alley there, but.
Because he can.
If, if there's anything new that's contributing that we haven't been thinking to watch, maybe, I don't know.
Well, because the, the, and, and you'll see some of this data for the, um, race series, uh, work session you're gonna have is that, that. The data that we can get from people's cell phones is phenomenal. So you can essentially say. Um, how many people went to Leadville Outdoors yesterday? And we can know. And so we can see, we can't see if they actually spent money. That it's, it's their cellphone paying off of a tower, but we can probably compare year over to year, some of the businesses, how many people have gone in. If those numbers are rising, then you might be able to say there's a correlation there. Don't, I mean, you can suppose there's a correlation. You know, without interviewing those people to say, did you go and spend money? But if our sales tax is going up and the number of people going in and out of our stores is going up, then. That may be part of it.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to, at some point, uh, in the future, having Adam kind of. If he's interested in that, running those numbers and side aside comparison to the sales tax.
And, and that was one of the things that we were talking about with retail strategies is that, that, that's their, that's one of the things that they could provide for us. Is that data to the existing businesses so that they can know how many, cause they might say, gosh, it feels busier this winter than last winter. But A, the AI data can tell.
Hmm.
Uh, unless someone doesn't have a cellphone, and then, then they don't actually have any money, they would just pay in cash.
Yeah, it just, seeing what we're actually seeing.
Yeah.
It sure feels like there's something contributing that we're not watching, it would be nice to find out what that is.
Yeah, there, there was a, um, one of the tasks within the sheet that they, they sent. Um, there was a, for, for February, um, over January, uh, wholesale trade. Um, was, was up, um, over twelve thousand dollars. Um, mine was, um, almost eighteen thousand dollars, it was zero four. January, um. So there, there, I'll, I'll try to, I'll send this out, but there's, there's a full buttons and features.
That'd be interesting to look at, thank you.
That the county has, um, put together. Um, I think. Uh, council member best have said that we, I mentioned being down, um, twenty-four compared to last year. Um, although the sales tax overall is up from the prior year, maybe you're referring to the budget, because you budgeted it at three point nine nine, which. Obviously, we didn't have that, um. But the, the, the budget within the sales tax sheet is formula driven and, um. That March payment in May of twenty-two, uh, really skewed that budget number. Um, so that it was projecting higher at the three point nine. Um, so overall, we were, we were up. But we were down compared to what we.
Thank you.
First, I'll hang out.
No, good news, sir.
Yeah, all right, let's move to the bills and, um, any questions or concerns about them? If not, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Just needs to pay the bills.
Thomas seconds.
Uh, roll call, or do I do it all in favor? All in favor?
Uh, uh.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, since we're wrapping department reports, um, Steve. Why don't you go ahead and ask your question, since we do have public comment on items on the agenda, so.
Oh, okay.
If you still got it in your head, though, why don't you ask it?
Yeah, uh, you talked about the, the survey project. That there'll be four hundred individual properties that you're gonna look at, and then also look at the. The historic district. Um, so some of these properties are. Up in here, they're, they're outside of the historic district, right? And we're thinking about, uh, folding the historic district out to encompass them, right?
Uh, I don't, I don't, not any dice, but that would be part of this. This project, I, I think that within, within the survey project, potentially, they would look at. Uh, some structures that are outside of that boundary, to see if they are contributing or not.
That, that's up in here. Did, did you talk about this before? I mean, you did, did in some other meetings.
Okay.
About this nonsense of, that, that's not my question. My question is, i- in the historic district, how many, uh, properties are. Can you estimate roughly under, under their government survey?
Oh, uh, only, we've missed four hundred. Oh, let's see here. I, I would, it, it probably just makes the most sense for me to, because we have a, a document that totals all those up. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, it's probably best for me just to. I, yeah, I mean, I would say, we had a hundred in the last, the last, um. Maybe the last survey, about a hundred, uh, which was the first part of, um. The first phase one priority, this, this next, this next project was, was a hundred and four.
Hundred and four, sixty-five percent of those were contributing.
Yeah, the next, uh, the second half of phase one, which I just talked about tonight, which had four hundred plus structures, we're wrap up phase one. Then there are three other phases, so we're looking at five hundred structures, over five hundred structures approximately, and. And then the first priority one, I think there are three priorities, assuming that there are about five hundred in the other two, that's fifteen hundred. And we're looking at about, um, just interpolating what we saw on the first survey, about seventy to seventy-five percent contributing. Or, you know, it's possible that we have, you know, somewhere around. And at least half or three quarters of our, of those fifteen hundred structures being contributing structures to the district. Rough, rough guess.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And to answer your non-question, yes, the surveys will help us identify if we should modify the boundaries of the national compared district.
Yeah, well, I thought you said some other meetings.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so we're moving on to our action items. Um, we've been going a while and we're almost to the end. Does anyone need a break or can we?
Uh, I don't know that we have, I can, I continue to.
It's just.
Great. So, Yana, had that one up, Chapin?
Uh, yeah, could you just introduce the title of the item?
Sure. So we're on to agenda item nine A, certificate of appropriateness for the Homeac Schneider Residence Garage. One twenty-one West Ninth Street, continue to the four one meeting.
Uh, Mayor, Council, the last Reserve Preservation Commission meeting, the public here for that. Uh, project was continued, and so there's not a recommendation before you tonight, uh, from the Reserve Preservation Commission. Uh, so we need to continue this item to your, uh, first meeting in April.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yes.
Edwards moves that we continue the homey garage hearing to April first.
Correct.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Littlel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill, who's awesome.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, public comments. Anybody online? Hearing none, mayor's report?
Hey, everyone. Uh, first I wanna thank Mayor Protem Tharp for. Handling this meeting. It certainly goes smoother to have somebody in person. I really appreciate the time and preparation you put into this. Um, first thing is just a reminder, the CML Annual Conference is rapidly approaching the. End of early bird pricing. This is June twenty-fourth through the. Twenty-seventh, um, I'd really highly recommend, uh, you consider attending. It is, um, in Breckenridge this year, so certainly within striking distance. If anyone has any questions, difficulty. Um. Registering for it or, uh, needs a little financial help out of the education, the, the modest education budget that I have. Please let me know. Um, and then to end on a happier note, uh, so I got. Notification that the C dot revitalizing Main Streets grant that I submitted is pending formal approval. Um, this would be a grant to replace our downtown streetlights and the wiring within the poles. It's a little bit of a complicated project, but, um, and I'm a little frightened by it all, but, uh, uh, really excited. So I think we can actually upgrade, um, our downtown lights and make them more reliable. And, uh, dark sky friendly and, uh, improve the ability to also. Access, um, like a plug at each of the poles to. Further beautify our downtown. So I'm pretty excited about that development, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, any council reports this evening? Yeah, I have one, um. So, like Lori mentioned, uh, we've continued to meet with the county, the school district. Um, and also now PB Swims has joined, uh, recent meetings to talk about indoor recreation space. And it essentially talks about the overlap of three buildings, the community center that the city owns. The possible future rec center that the county has studied the feasibility of, and LCIS. Um. Those meetings have continued to be really good for coordination, um. And it does have a lot of overlapping, overlapping parts, like. What the decision on a pool is will impact how the other buildings are used, and, and so all these things. In some way, in some ways, everybody's waiting on other people to find out what's gonna happen. And, um, so it can feel like a tedious process, but it also has been really valuable. And I think those relationships are good and that communication platform has been good. Um, so that we can coordinate, be efficient within our community resources. And ultimately, hopefully find the best and most possible solution for our community to have some indoor rec space. At the most recent meeting, um, we identified the importance of, um. Getting all three of the relevant boards together for a work session. Um, because we do have, we do have some decisions to make, so the city, we must decide. How the money from this new sales tax will be used, that's sort of our, um. That's our piece of that pie, but also it'll inform how and what we do with, uh, the community center. Um. One of the main objectives of that future work session meeting. Would also be to look at side by side comparisons, or maybe side by side isn't the best word. But some detailed comparisons of paths towards a possible aquatic center. So the current two paths right now are the one that PB Swims is really behind and advocating for, which is remodeling LCIS. And the other path for be a new build rec center that the county has been studying. So depending on that decision, that informs the city council on what we end up funding with this tax revenue, right? Um, so the, the, Lori, let me know if I've missed any details, or, or if you have other, or if you're correcting anything if I'm wrong. Um. We are, that working group has decided that there'd be some pre-work done where. The county and PB Swims would get together and work on a common presentation about what those two options are. Because I think sometimes in community meetings, it seems like people are working from different information sets. And so our proposal was to have a common information set that is agreed upon about. What is the estimated cost of both projects? What is the estimated timeline of both projects? How, how many years of use does that get us, that kind of stuff? And so, um, PB Swims and the county folks agreed to do that pre-work. Uh, bring it back to that working group to have sort of a review and kind of draft feedback session. And then ultimately, those revisions will be made and brought to a work session, um. Where we would discuss, because it really involves the B O C C, the Board of Education, because they own LCIS. Us, because we have that tax revenue now. And those are, those are the decision makers, and then PB Swims is also, um, so invested in the aquatics end of things, but. It, they aren't necessarily making the decisions, but they certainly are, um, community partners who have an interest there. So it involves quite a few decision makers to get there. Um, there'll be more work done on what the agenda of that meeting is and what, how it'll be facilitated. And, and we wanna make sure we get some good outcomes from it. Um, so a little more TBD on the actual format and everything. We were talking about.
June.
June for that, right?
And mentioning the reason is the county will get their reporting, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, L, T, O L A, I can't remember what's the.
OLC, I think is the, the consultant.
Uh, they're expecting their final report from OLC in May. And, uh, then some time to digest that on the board side and then potentially. Know more about which way, direction the B O C C may go with a new facility at that point. Um, to have better information to put this side by side analysis together. Okay.
That would be very helpful. Thank you for.
I agree. I personally have felt, I hear a lot of numbers, they go one in, one in one year, out the other. I've heard different parties question the other party's numbers, and so I, I agree, I think this would be really helpful. I think it'll also be helpful for our residents of our county and city to, to understand where we're at. I do think one curve ball is that, um. PB Swims is applying for congressionally directed funding. For remodeling LCIS with them, PB Swims as the operator.
I don't know if it still exists.
So they're essentially pursuing funding for a model. That hasn't been. That hasn't been agreed upon by the decision makers who would need to, so.
And also to a place that is likely to not be funded.
Yeah, potentially, um. We discussed with them not doing that in order to have more of a cohesive community plan, but that that would seem to be a non-starter in that meeting, so. Sounds like they are going for it, um.
Isn't, isn't the future of. LCIS still somewhat up in the air with this reward? Um, my understanding, it's pretty solid that they, well, the exact use of it um. Is sure up in the air, but.
But the intention is to keep the space and and to do some type of renovation.
The full intention that the superintendent has communicated because of this forward conversations is that they will be keeping LCIS.
Okay.
For different usages and will be likely to sell the pits um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Building.
Gotcha, okay.
Could I, could I speak to some detail there?
Please.
There's, there's, I mean, nothing's a hundred percent certain, right, but there's some pretty solid pieces, so. In fall of twenty or summer of twenty twenty-six. The students will leave LCIS. Third through fifth grade will go to the elementary, sixth grade will go to the high school. The district office, Cloud City High. And Project Dream, which is the after-school program, they're all gonna go into LCIS and base out of there. There's a pretty good chance Bright Start might move, would move over there as well. Uh we're still exploring that. Um. What's more up in the air are more of the possible community assets such as a pool. Um, there's a chance the LCIS space could meet. Um some or many of the purposes we've discussed for the community center, such as a open teen hangout space. Um, more gym access, there's a possibility that the LCIS gym would be more available to the community. Um. Than it is now as a school, so I think.
There's, there's. Potentially a lot of overlap that we're discussing.
Yes, there's possible overlap between all three of those possible buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions about that? So I I think in summary, I think we have cause to be optimistic about the coordination that's happening. Any other council reports? Well, lovely. What do we got here? Community count, that's not on the agenda. Who knows?
My bad.
What are words? Okay.
So next Tuesday is the work session at CMC.
Correct.
Six to approximately nine.
Yeah, I think based upon our meeting today, uh we have initially said work sessions are six to eight, but based upon the material we need to cover, it's probably gonna be more like that.
Your next Laura meeting on the third of April.
What's that?
Next Laura meeting the third of April.
Oh, yeah.
Is that?
Yeah. Yeah, any other questions or updates to the community meetings planner? Public meetings planner? Okay. Well, with that, it is eight fifty-four and. Uh do we need a motion to adjourn or do we just adjourn?
Adjourn.
We're adjourning. Thanks, sister. Thanks.